Before we begin, as I've taken to doing, I would like to dedicate the meeting. And tonight's meeting, I'd like to dedicate to this building that we are all sitting in. So the Women's Club, I've actually just gone through the crowd asking, does anybody know what year this was actually built? The closest I could get to someone who felt sure was 1922. Frank Egger, what year was this building built? Never mind. Okay, so this building is a very special place. And I want to just relay a story of the last week of this building in Fairfax. So as everybody knows, on Saturday, we had a very lively and, I think, ultimately productive workshop. We got to see many, many of the characters of Fairfax. I think we worked together and we worked our way through something very difficult. And I think in the end of that day, we left feeling like we had learned a lot. And I would call it productive. So the next day, Sunday, I came into this building to a memorial for a young man, Patrick Troop, who passed away. It was filled with his family, his friends, some familiar faces that I had seen the day before, many faces that I had never seen before, but all local people, a much younger crowd. And the room was packed with the same number of people that were here the day prior and spilling out the doors. The day was a celebration of life. It was a celebration of good because Patrick Troop brought good. For all it means, he brought good. And everyone got a chance to check inside of their own personal good and what they would like to see from the community. And people spoke, and people cried, and people basically talked about that treasure, that goodness. That day closed, and the next day, I came in Monday morning, and I teach a music class in here. And I had about 15 little two- and three-year-olds running around, jumping up and down on these seats, playing, parents laughing, singing, dancing. And then that day closed, and the building went back to its neutrality. This building is a place for everyone. Everyone is a member of the Women's Club. Sometimes people move to Fairfax and they say, "I'm a man. Can I come to the Women's Club?" And I think everybody that's been here for more than five minutes understands that this is an inclusive, this is a membership-for-all kind of place. And yet, no matter what happens in here, whether it's Christmas caroling, whether it's school parties that turn the place from a rainforest to a medieval fest, whether it's a workshop, or a funeral, or a wedding, or a 50th birthday, this place then goes back to its neutrality. I would like to invite everyone tonight to come to that place, where we all enter together from that place of neutrality, listen to one another, learn what we can, and then again, leave, bring it back to its natural state of neutrality, where we can continue the work that we all do so well together. So in the spirit of that, we will continue the meeting. The approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting, would anyone like to move anything around?
Motion.
Before you move, I would like to ask that we move council reports to the end of the meeting, so that we can get to the items that people have come here to talk about.
I agree.
Okay, can we?
So I make a motion to move the council reports to the end of the meeting.
And with that, I would move that we move the agenda and the affidavit of posting.
Second.
Okay, so, once off, motion once off, and second read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Announcing action from closed session is that we took no action, did not direct staff, and so, nothing to report. Protocol. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected not to act like the vice presidential candidates during the debate last night, and to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. So if you would please turn off your cellphones or silence them, we will continue. So we're going to start with appointments. We interviewed two candidates for the Planning Commission earlier this evening in a special meeting. So what I would like to do is just go down the row here and have different council members give their feedback, and then we'll move to a motion to appoint one or the other, or not. It is in the discretion of the council not to appoint this evening.
As is so often the occasion when we're called upon to appoint folks to so many different boards and commissions, it always seems to be an embarrassment of riches, and that was no different this evening. I think both candidates would serve very well. I'm a little concerned that Bob has a potential travel schedule. First of all, I don't even know how to put it. You're both retired, and you're going to go off, and you're going to travel from time to time, and I should be so lucky. But with that... Let's put that in the budget for next year, Garrett. I'm concerned sometimes that I see empty seats on the dais, and the issues that the Planning Commission deal with are particularly important. I might joke back to the time that former mayor Doug Wilson said, "Any idiot can sit on a town council. The real brains of the operation sit on the Planning Commission." And to me, seeing empty seats is a particular concern over these past couple of years. And so, when it comes time for me to select, your honesty is tremendous, and the limitation that you note is important, that you are upfront about it. But on that basis alone, I'm going to have to go with the other extraordinary applicant, Cindy, on this one. But I thought during the interview that Barbara made an excellent point. If you look just on the agenda, we identify a number of other committees and boards that require folks such as yourself to step up and join, you know, the effort. And you pointed out in your comments that it's so important for members of the community to really fill out all of these positions. Those, I think, could accommodate a travel schedule, and missing a couple here or there during the year. So while I will support Cindy for the position, I'm hoping, Bob, that you will look at the -- it's a long list of other committees that are there, and throw your hat in the ring. Because I must say, your travel schedule may change in the future, and there'll be another opportunity, I'm sure, that people leave the Planning Commission, and we'll have a second time to sit down and have a good chat. So thank you.
Thank you. I also agree that we had two very qualified candidates, but I do want to say that I think Cindy brings to this kind of a background in consistently being at the council meetings, sitting through with us, I think, to the bitter end most often, and also attending Planning Commission meetings. And I think her responses, as far as her knowledge of more of the building blocks of what the Planning Commission does, I think, would be well suited to the Planning Commission, as well as her more global view of Fairfax as a whole. So I feel Cindy brings some really good qualifications to the Planning Commission, and she has been our CIRC coordinator for Fairfax to help us in times of emergency, and done a lot on her own, just to volunteer for the town. So I think after this appointment, Renee, our mayor, is going to announce some of the other committees. And I want to say that I served on the Open Space Committee for about eight years before being on the Planning Commission. And I do feel for either candidate, considering being part of another committee, it's really important to kind of get kind of the groundwork. And I agree with David that I think it's pretty critical that planning commissioners try to attend as many meetings as possible, just as we on the council do. I think that is a really important commission. So I feel that people should really consider some of these other committees. The volunteers do great work. The Open Space Committee does great work, and some of the others. So there's lots of opportunities to volunteer and help our town that maybe works with a more travel-friendly schedule.
John.
Yeah, well, I don't want to repeat the same things my fellow council members have said, but I agree with just the schedule concerns, scheduling concerns. I mean, I think that the Planning Commission is also a place where it's important to bring some of the qualities that you were talking about, Bob, in terms of listening to people and trying to come to a middle ground where you kind of balance out the various factors and really analyze what needs, where the solution lies. And, you know, sometimes it's not cutting the baby in half, it's finding out, oh, maybe the baby can be over here, and that'll be good. It's also important to be available. I appreciate your honesty, Bob, and the fact that you're not going to be around for three months, and that's, you know, it takes a while to get up to speed also. So I would probably also go with Cindy.
I'm Peter.
Yeah, I think I echo my fellow council people's comments. And I was impressed, Bob, with your responses. I especially liked your, and I think your background would be good, and I especially liked your response about considering granting variances and really weighing whether or not the variance could be granted in a way that either mitigates or doesn't affect the ordinance, the variance is being asked to vary. I thought that was a very thoughtful approach philosophically, and kind of, I think, encapsulated a really good approach to the planning, serving on the Planning Commission. And I'd encourage you to reapply perhaps another time, maybe your travel schedule wouldn't, at a time when your travel schedule isn't, you know, taking you away quite as much. And so, yeah, those are my comments.
Well, I find this a very tough thing to do. It's probably the hardest thing we do on council, when people step forward and care as much as both of these individuals care. Having just worked with Bob on the BEPAC, which is the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, seeing his coming in pretty much from the cold, as someone who knows the town because he walks and he bikes, and he walks his talk, he had great input, he hadn't really, like, worked on a committee before, so watching him find his way and then become a very important member of that committee was very refreshing for me, honestly. I, Cindy is just our, you know, our rock. She's always here. She keeps watching, and she knows what's going on, and has given an immense amount of time. I've been working with her, although we haven't met for a while, in the Citizen Advisory Committee of the Disaster Council. And having said that, I was very enthralled with what Bob was talking about, about it's a new perspective, it's a design perspective, it's, I know how he listens, I've listened a lot to Bob. I like the idea of adding that kind of a voice. And on the other hand, I feel like Tevye and Fiddler on the Roof, your schedule, it's a really big deal, and especially right now. So three meetings when we are up with lots and lots of really important things, and then the possibility of it happening more consistently isn't actually really fair to the rest of the Planning Commission. And that's really my fear. So I would vote to appoint Cindy at this time, and Bob, it's been a great, great pleasure working with you, and I really hope you don't disappear, or take this as any kind of a lack of our, you know, desire to have you very involved in the town. So hard to do, but I'm going to vote for Cindy. So I think what we've got here is a motion to be made.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Cindy Swift to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Human error. Do we need to do public comment? We do need to have public comment in all things, any public comment. Seeing none, we'll go back.
So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Cindy Swift to the Planning Commission, and to tell her, we spent a lot of time talking about Bob's schedule, but I want to say I'm voting for Cindy because I feel that she really is the best candidate. So that's why I'm making the motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is motion Kohler, second Wainsoff, and all in favor, you know, us. Okay. Thank you so much. I hope you stay. Okay. So moving on to announcements, we have multiple vacancies on boards and commissions. Two, do we still have two on Open Space? Now we have one. We have just appointed Sarah Dudley to the Open Space Committee, and we're thrilled about that. We have two on the General Plan Implementation Committee, two on the Volunteer Board. Applications, as always, are available at Town Hall or on the town website. You can contact our town clerk for information. On October 31st, the Chamber of Commerce has its annual Halloween parade between 5:00 and 7:00. It starts at the Fairfax Theater. Please join, it's the most adorable thing in the world. And the Fairfax Food Pantry, as always, every Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Fairfax Community Church, 2398 Sir Francis Drake. Volunteers are always needed, and the doors are wide open, and always ready to serve whoever should be in need. And now we're going to move on to... Oh, sorry. More announcements. Barbara.
So just a quick announcement. Some of you have heard about our Marine Clean Energy Deep Green Incentive. So this provides $5 off a month for a year to sign up for deep green under Marine Clean Energy. And we have had 69 sign-ups to date, and we have 31 more to go. So I encourage folks to sign up for deep green. This is something the Climate Action Committee has been working on for quite a while, and I'm pleased to be a member of that. Thank you.
Before we move to open time for public comment, I just wanted to ask, would the council be in favor of having the town managers report, although we have moved council reports? I would like to make sure that there were things I wanted to have you report out on. Okay, so we'll continue like that. So now it's time for open time. Each member of the community will have three minutes. I would ask you to really respect the time limit, so we don't have to sit up here and yank you off, which is not a comfortable thing to do. And if you would state your name and your address, if you're comfortable doing so, that would be great, and just push the button.
Hi.
This is for items not on the agenda.
Marsha Custer, 12 Fortis. I just want to make a very brief comment, that I was at the workshop on Saturday, and I would just like to say...
Marsha, this is the second time I'm interrupting you, and I do apologize, but this is an agendized item. And I know it means staying, but it's going to be early in the agenda, just after consent, so please save it, okay? The open time has to be for things not on the agenda, otherwise we get...
I understand.
Yeah. Okay. Excellent. Thank you for understanding. Okay. Rose.
My name is Rose Tabor, and I want to thank all of you for coming on Saturday. I was just so proud of everybody, how hard they worked, and you guys gave up your Saturday to come. And thank you. I had to get that out. Fairfax is supposed to be an aged, friendly town. And I'm not talking about the streets downtown now, I'm talking about the, I'm sorry, sidewalks. I'm talking about the sidewalks all over town that we cannot walk on. Not because they're, they're in bad repair, but there's all kinds of cars parked on them, gardens, flower gardens, trees planted, the whole thing. I don't know how you expect us to walk downtown. And you have an ordinance, it's right on the books, you don't even have to come up with something new. Why is it not enforced? I brought some pictures that Michelle has, if you'll pass them to them, you know, that's for them to keep. And that's just in the Deer Park area. The Creek Road, I was on there the other night, there was parking going on the east side, and there was people, there were probably about 15 people out walking that night. People with strollers, their dogs, and there's no place to walk. And imagine what a wheelchair, there's no place for a wheelchair to, and if anybody wants to, I'll borrow a wheelchair, and you can push me around over there and see how comfortable it would be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rose. Any other people for...
Just let's see if Garrett wants to come back and talk to us about this.
We can, if you like, agendize it for discussion.
Well, you can relieve the board at any time, and I'll just share some thoughts on this.
Okay.
Good evening.
Okay.
I'm representing a group, Save Lefty Gomez. Before plans go any farther for...
Excuse me? Again, I'm going to interrupt. We do have an agenda item on this topic, I believe.
That's Sunnyside on the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was in a general...
No.
Thank you.
Before plans go any farther for building flood detention basins in this town, it's important for the people of Fairfax to understand that the dangers flood detention basins bring to communities. People have died in detention basins. Three months ago, in July, three people died in Las Vegas flood. One body was found in a detention basin, and two others in flood channels that feed into detention basins there. Las Vegas spent $1.7 billion on flood control infrastructure. The three fatalities in this flood all occurred within flood control structures themselves. Flood control facilities such as detention basins and the channels that feed them create unforeseen consequences and are themselves flood hazards. They create permanent, ongoing environmental destruction, and can even make flooding problems worse in the long run. September 2014, a detention basin in Arizona failed and flooded 200 nearby homes. Since those homes weren't in the flood zone, the 200 households affected did not have flood insurance. April 2016, a flood detention basin overflowed in Houston. It caused houses to flood in the neighborhood that neighbors claimed did not flood prior to the basin's completion eight years later, earlier. These are just two recent examples, but the list is longer. You may have heard council member David Wainsoff has claimed that Fairfax will flood unless we build flood detention basins in our town. He claims detention basins will solve our flooding issues. But moving hazards from one place to another does not solve the problem. There are large government grants available for constructing flood detention basins in this country. This money eventually goes to the big industry, hydrologists, engineers, and consultants. But availability of grant money does not justify bringing new flood hazards into areas where flooding has not been a problem before. I encourage Fairfaxians to educate themselves about flood detention basin failures and hazards, which can be easily done at www/saveleftygomez.com. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Suzanne Chaney, and I live at 12A's Court, and I'm a transit rider. And since they've stopped the 23 bus ends in downtown Fairfax, and I have to sit there and wait up to 55 minutes for a bus transfer now, there's no shelter. This is going west towards West Marin, and it's very hot in the sun, and it's going to be awfully wet. And I'm a senior, and I can't drive because I have an eyesight problem, and I'd like you to have a bus shelter there. I don't see why my tax money can't have me not sit next to smokers, or at least put a bench there. I have to sit on this cement thing. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Just look at it and do something, please.
Excuse me, what location is that?
Right here, right across from...
Right downtown.
Downtown, you're talking.
Okay.
There's like no shelter. And there's also none where I have to wait to get on the bus.
You're talking about going west?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne.
Thanks.
Okay, Dana, remember the three minutes, okay?
If I go over, just tell me.
Okay.
My name is Dana Rosey. I live in San Francisco. Last month, I talked about the high rates of breast cancer in Marin, and how a significant amount was caused by the use of hormone replacement therapy, which is composed of synthetic estrogen and progesterone, and about the decades and decades of research showing that synthetic estrogen was causing cancer, birth defects, and heart attacks in laboratory animals with similar patterns to humans. How in 1977, Dr. Sol Gussberg summed up 50 years of research, saying supportive data for the estrogen cancer hypothesis is substantial, that estrogen is a powerful growth stimulating agent, dates back to at least the 1920s. And because it was such a powerful growth stimulating agent, the type of breast cancer that women developed turned out to be very aggressive. They had a 96% greater likelihood of dying from it. This is important. This risk goes away when women stop taking it. Another form of synthetic estrogen called DES was given to pregnant women to prevent miscarriages and promote healthy babies. The English chemist Charles Dodds, who was the person responsible for synthesizing estrogen in 1938, was appalled by this idea. He ran an experiment on pregnant rabbits, showing that it would abort an established pregnancy. Fifteen years later, studied on unhuman subjects, showed that pregnant women who took DES had more miscarriages. The drug companies nonetheless continued to heavily market DES to pregnant women for 20 more years, until 1971, when it was discovered that some of the DES daughters were developing a rare cancer of the reproductive system, not seen in young women before. It was often fatal. And the DES daughters, who were lucky enough not to develop this rare cancer, are unfortunately developing breast cancer, at twice the national U.S. rate in their 40s, and in their 50s at three times the national rate. This drug was the most profitable drug in history up to that point, but it should not ever have reached the market as it did until it was thoroughly tested. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana, for your continued commitment.
Good evening. Jody Timms, 290 Cascade, and your representative on the Commission on Aging for the town of Fairfax. Just wanted to do my monthly announcements. First of all, the Commission is meeting tomorrow morning at the Margarita Johnson Senior Center in Marin City. Our talk tomorrow morning from 10:00 to 11:00 is on the impact... Our talk tomorrow morning from 10:00 to 11:00 is on the impact of running out of money, a look at retirement risks for women. So any senior women or men who might have some concerns about running out of money because we're living a lot longer, might want to come to the talk tomorrow. I also want to mention again, and I've brought some flyers, which I'll leave in the back, the Senior Information Fair, which is the big event that the Commission puts on each year, will be happening October 26th, so in a couple more weeks, at the Marin Exhibit Hall from 9:00 to 3:00 on Wednesday. There's hundreds of booths and vendors and entertainment. So if you're a senior and you're wondering about what services are available in the county, or you happen to know a senior who, you could even take a senior, if you're not, to the fair to show them the kinds of resources and opportunities that are available for seniors in Marin. I think it would be great. We would love to see people there. In terms of transportation, if you need that, rides are free. If you can get to the whistle stop in San Rafael, there'll be a shuttle going back and forth, taking folks there. Also want to reiterate the 457 info, which is a hotline in Marin County for seniors can call for, to find out about any kinds of services. It's answered by social workers who can help and assist in many, many ways. So I wanted to mention that again as well. And just finally, also as the Chair of the Age Friendly Fairfax Task Force, which age friendly means we're working toward it, doesn't mean we're there yet, as a WHO affiliation that the Town of Fairfax has. Certainly, our sidewalks are of high importance, I think, to all of us. I've been volunteering with Marin Villages. I recently took an older woman who has very limited vision from her home to downtown with a walker. It was quite harrowing. I was walking in the street much of the time. But anyways, definitely on our list. But the other thing that we had on our list for safe routes for seniors were benches, to put more benches through town. And I want to thank the Town Council for the funds that you put behind four benches, two of which have gone along center there, and two others in town. So I appreciate what you've done, and we hope to do more around getting more benches available for seniors. So when you're walking, you have a chance to sit and stop and rest. And of course, they're for everyone. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody, for everything. Okay, Kiki.
Good evening, Council. Kiki Laporta, Glen Drive. I would just like to remind you and the public and those watching at home that many, many more billions of dollars of loss and property damage have been sustained, lives lost, and injuries caused by floods than by flood detention basins. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else for open time? Is that one? Okay.
Jim Rice, Laurel Drive. Today, I think it was you, Peter, who left yes on C lawn sign. Thank you very much. Mary Jo and I endorsed it early on. And now I'm getting confused because, as I read it a little bit more carefully, it talked about fixing cracks in the sidewalk, and that would be great. I'd love to see that. And it also said downtown enhancement, and I don't know what that means. Is it something that is going to promote some of the ideas that were discussed on Saturday? I don't know. But I'd sure like to know.
Jim, maybe I can just--
Okay. Could you stop the timer, please? I'd like to have my full timer.
Well, I just want to, we're not really supposed to converse, but what you have in the flyer that was provided to you is more about things that in general could be considered. And so having written the flyer, there was word limitation. So there are things that we will talk about, but it's more things like potentially fixing sidewalks if we can, but that will be things that the Council would consider should Measure C pass.
Okay. I'm all for paying my taxes and making improvements for the town and making the town safer and making sure that we have the services that we need in the town. I'm going to hold off on sinking that lawn sign in until I find out a lot more about it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Diane.
Hi. Diane Hoffman, 33 Portius. And this is about Measure C, too. I got one of those on my door and I read it. And written on it, it said, "Every dollar raised stays in Fairfax," which sounded really good, but then I checked into it. And in fact, the money, the Measure C, will go into the general fund. And Fairfax has been paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to consultants out of the general fund. Not only do the consultants not live in Fairfax, most of them don't even live in Marin County. And I think the Town Council has been rubber stamping these expenditures. For example, enormous amounts of money has been spent on the town center element, which is an optional element, not required by the state. And somehow, there seems to be ample money in the general fund to pay consultants for fancy designs with drastically change this town, and most Fairfax residents don't want, but no money to fix sidewalks. And I do hope there's a council member who will step up to the plate and really start paying attention where our money is being spent.
Thank you, Diane. Anyone else? Okay.
Norma Fragoso, 74 Mirna Avenue. And I just want to encourage the Council that it's very important to keep looking at flood control measures. I, for one, live right on a creek, and we all remember the 2006 flooding throughout all of Marin County. I was up to my knees in water in my backyard. Many of you have seen my little bridge across the creek. There was two feet of water above the bridge, and the repairs were very costly, very expensive to me, and I would hate to have that occur again. And I appreciate the Council's consideration of the security of the town.
Okay. Thank you, Norma. So that's it? Okay. We're moving right along to the consent calendar. Colleagues, anything you would like to do?
I was hoping to pull item 10 and item 13 for discussion later on.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Just briefly, when we do get to vote on it, I'll abstain from number three in the minutes. Missed my first council meeting in 11 years last month. And also, I had the chance to discuss this with Barbara beforehand, not to pull it, but just make a clarification. On the endorsement of Prop 62 to repeal the death penalty, it's very important that folks, if so inclined in that direction, also must oppose Prop 66, which would move the death machine ever more expeditiously down its path. And the reason that you have to actually consider both of these voting yes on one and no on 66 is that they will tally the yes votes for both measures. The one that gets the most yes votes will supersede the second one. So critical to think 62 and 66 is in tandem.
Okay. Thank you, David. And anyone else? Anything you would like to? Okay. Let's decide how and when we're going to consider these items. Barbara, I would rather not wait until the end of the meeting. Is it something we can do quickly?
How about we do after item 16, those two?
Okay. That sounds good to me. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. So would anyone like to make a motion?
Move to take items 10 and 13 off the consent calendar and have them heard after item 16 of the regular agenda.
And I'll second that, abstaining personally for number three.
Okay. So that's motion lax and second Wainsoff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think public comment should have come before that vote.
Should have. It wasn't clear whether you were just approving pulling it or approving pulling it and approving the consent calendar same time. So perhaps you might want to ask for public comment now.
Okay. So we will say that those votes were to pull the items and consider them after item 16. Now, is there any public comment on consent calendar? Seeing none, let's have a motion to approve consent.
Well, do you want the same?
Absolutely.
I'll move consent.
Well, because we didn't do it correctly. It's important.
Approval except for 10 and 13.
Okay.
10 and 14. It's 10, 13?
10 and 13.
13.
Okay. Anyone second?
I'll second it with a personal abstention for number three.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we have motion read, second Wainsoff, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving right along, we are going to skip council reports and comments until the end. Let's continue with the Town Manager's report, please.
Hi, members of the Council. Last meeting, you asked him to report on the status of the station, which is the former gas station there in Sir Francis Drake. The owner indicates he had a little lull in activity. He had to secure his financing. He does have his financing secured now, and will be moving forward with the project. He does have a temporary encroachment permit from us, which allows him to actually, during construction period, use it as a staging area while he does his project. But obviously, when the project's completed, everything would be removed and right away we'd return to the way it was prior to construction.
Okay. That concludes it? Okay. Excellent. So moving right along to the regular agenda. So this agenda item is a discussion regarding the flood control District Zone 9's proposal to explore the location of a detention basin at the former Sunnyside Nursery, Growing Grounds. I would like to just point out that county staff will be presenting and that Supervisor Katie Rice is in the audience. She's here to listen to comments and the concerns of the Fairfax community. So thank you for coming, and we look forward to the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Goddard and the Council. Thank you for having me. My name's Tony Williams. I'm the Flood Control and Water Resources Division Manager with the County Department of Public Works. I'm going to talk about the Ross Valley Flood Protection Watershed Program as soon as we get it up. And I apologize for the delay.
Uh-oh.
Sorry. It's okay. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So what I'd like to do is just give a quick overview of the overall watershed and flood protection program. I could spend hours talking about it, but I'll do a quick overview and then kind of narrow in on the Fairfax-specific elements of that program. Talk a little bit about our Department of Water Resources grant migration process, and then some announcements on some upcoming opportunities to get really involved in the So as has been pointed out by a member of the public, we have flooding in the Ross Valley, and Fairfax is not immune to that. There's been historical flooding going back to the 1800s, in fact. I personally remember the floods of '82. I was a senior in high school in Mill Valley, but it was quite, it still has a lingering impact on my mind. This map shows, the areas in red, and granted, this is a very blown-out scale, but shows where the creek left its banks and flooded streets and properties. The pictures up in the upper right-hand corner are the old, well, it's not old, it's still there, the theater. I think that was from the 50s, and then, of course, the Town Hall from 2005. Next slide, please. So the program has three main tools, three legs of the stool, if you will, to reduce flood risk and address the flooding problem. We can reduce flow throughout the watershed. We have a couple tools to do that. We can detain some of that flow at the right times. We can also implement green infrastructure or low-impact development. It's kind of the new thing, anyway. We can try to increase capacity of the various tributaries in the main creek running through the valley. That requires actually containing the flow within the creeks. Unfortunately, with the way development has occurred in the valley, there's, we can't sort of widen the flood plain without disrupting properties, but we can do our best to contain flows within the creek, replace bridges, and a lot of those projects are ongoing in San Salmo and in Fairfax. And we can continue our ongoing channel maintenance and improve that program. And then the last sort of leg of the stool is prepare and become as resilient as we can from flooding, and that's through some existing programs. The community rating system, which the county participates in, all the towns in the valley participate in. And we're getting ready to update our local hazard mitigation plan and make it more of a multi-jurisdictional plan, and that'll open up opportunities for FEMA funding and other ways of making things more resilient. This is a little difficult to see, but this is kind of a map of the watershed, showing all the program elements. The areas in blue represent potential detention sites, basins that can hold back floodwaters at the right time to reduce that peak flow. The areas in green represent opportunities to improve creek capacity, as well as bridge replacements. And then the area in purple is the Army Corps of Engineers project down in Ross into Larkspur. And then in the lower watershed, in the tidal zone of Corder Madera Creek, there's opportunities to actually remove sediment and improve the capacity down there. So the benefits of the program are extensive, but the primary one is reducing that flood risk. And that supports a healthier and more resilient community. But really, that second sub-bullet, I think, is the key, and that is, not only are we reducing risk to property owners, but also allowing public services, especially emergency services, to get to places during a flood event, as well as overall improvement of various community assets. As the program makes improvements, whether it's to the creeks or creates detention basins, it should have a multi-benefit. And as, going back with any improvements in the creek, we want to enhance the environment, and that's going to be a given no matter what in our current permitting environment. And of course, the last bullet is build partnerships, and these are critical elements of the program. I think we have a good relationship with the Town of Fairfax, and we'll continue that. So in 2015, when the Memorial Park site became no longer a viable option, there was a flow reduction study to look at all the different ways that flooding could be reduced in the Ross Valley. And I just wanted to highlight, from that study, and the areas, or the items in blue font there indicate the Fairfax-specific basins that are available, that are feasible as areas to reduce that peak flow and control and reduce the risk of flooding downstream. And I won't read those in the interest of time for the next slide there. But I do want to talk about the concept of what a detention basin does in the context of overall flow reduction. This is a little bit of a busy graphic here, but basically, looking at the creek at Town Hall, the current capacity is 800 cubic feet per second, which is a common metric that's used to measure creek flow. Unfortunately-- So with those two measures, we can get down to the target flow that does not allow flooding to occur. But as you can see, basins upstream are really the big bang for the buck. The next slide, please. So I know there was an interest in having an update on the Sunnyside Nursery site in particular. I just want to give a quick little timeline here. Back in July 12th, the Board of Supervisors authorized a purchase agreement with the property owners at the time. On September 9th of this year, the purchase of the site was concluded. The Flood Control District is now the owner of that property. But then on August 31st, there was a sequoet petition filed by the Tressel Glen Homeowners' Association and some surrounding neighbors. And because of this ongoing sort of litigation, I can't really talk much more about that particular site, unfortunately. Next slide, please. But I will talk about the grant migration process. There is an $8.7 million grant that was identified for the Memorial Park Basin with matching funds. It's roughly $17.6 million identified in the program. And so, in order to maintain that, those funds with the Department of Water Resources, we've identified some alternatives and provided those to DWR, but the goal of that migration is to be consistent with the overall program goals, and that is to achieve, at least in the short term, a 25-year level of protection, and in the long term, a 100-year level of protection. And there are certain requirements of that grant that we have to maintain, and that is something that can be constructed by 2020, which is not that far away. It has to be within that funding structure, and it has to be comparable to what Memorial Park would have provided. The next slide, please. And so, what was identified with DWR were four alternatives. And what's interesting to note is there are two alternatives that deal specifically with the Fairfax watershed. The other alternatives deal with Sleepy Hollow, which is further downstream. That won't provide any immediate benefit to Fairfax. And then there is a no-detention-basin alternative in that suite of packages that are being evaluated over the next year. Excellent. Oh, sorry, go ahead and, go ahead, one more, and just to highlight the two Fairfax ones, and then next one. So, what's really happening now that I think is a critical step in the program is a programmatic environmental impact report. This slide here provides the general timeline of what's going to happen over the next year or so. We're hoping to actually kick off with a public scoping meeting in the next month or two, and this will look at all these, all the alternatives, whether we're talking basins, whether we're talking creek improvements, whether we're talking green infrastructure, whether we're talking raising homes. It's going to look at all possible scenarios. And the goal is to draft, or excuse me, is to circulate a draft EIR in the September of next year timeframe, about a year from now, or just less than a year from now, and then hopefully finalize a report in May of 2018, and then actually certify that document in June of 2018. Yes, please. So, I apologize, this is just a draft schedule. We hope to have some very firm dates and opportunities with locations for all these meetings that are coming up over the next couple months into early next year. I identified some that are already scheduled. The San Anselmo Town Council will be talking about some opportunities in, as far as improving the creeks in that part of the valley, in San Anselmo. That's coming up later this month. As part of that first alternative that was migrating this DWR grant to the Sleepy Hollow area, there's a community meeting for that, those folks already established in November, November 15th. And then the only other one that's firm right now is the next Zone Nine Advisory Board in December. But if you monitor our website, rossvalleywatershed.org, we will have firm dates and locations for these upcoming community meetings, dealing specifically with the overall program and the programmatic EIR, as well as this grant migration process. And that's all I had for tonight. I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you so much, Tony. Questions from council? Peter?
Thank you, Tony. So, as I understand things, the 100-year flood could produce 1,600 cubic foot per minute flow right here.
That's correct.
Under Town Hall, and the capacity of the creek is 800 cubic feet per minute?
Yeah, 850 cubic feet per second. Yeah, that's a.
Okay, and then, did I hear, I just want to make sure I heard this correctly. Is the goal of the Sunnyside Detention Basin to try to reduce that flow by 65%?
No, the 65% represents what detention basins would provide. Ideally, one site would provide that, but it's really probably going to be a combination of sites to achieve that. The goal is to reduce it by that much, because we know we can't improve the creeks enough to achieve that target.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
Do you know how much have engineers calculated, how much of that 100-year flow could be reduced by the Sunnyside basin? I'm just trying to get some sense of the benefit.
No, there's, since we're sort of heading into the environmental review process, during that process, we'll start to look at some of the engineering, but the design is several years off. An earlier study, the 2015 Flow Reduction Study that was mentioned, I think it looked at an optimal scenario of, and of course, now that the units have changed on you here, but it's an acre-foot storage volume that represents probably 75% of that 64% reduction, but that was just a initial analysis of that site. We haven't, we haven't fully designed or looked at the, you know, what's possible there. Probably be something less than that.
So, nobody's calculated how much the stream flow would be reduced during the 100-year flood by building that detention basin?
Not that one by itself. We know that from that graphic, there's 117 acre-feet of volume that we need to, you know, create somewhere upstream of Fairfax.
And how many acre-feet will the Sunnyside provide?
Well, like I said, the initial analysis that was done in 2015 maximized it at about 80 acre-feet.
Tony, let me jump in, because I anticipated that this issue might come up, so I went back to the Stetson Engineering report. And your numbers are almost spot-on, but maybe I can drill them down.
Sure.
Because they're the engineers, and they, you know, put it in their actual report. So, Peter, it's a good question, so I think I can help you out here. The detention to get us to the, to the protection so that we would not flood is somewhere, according to Stetson, between 150 and 175 acre-feet. We've discussed at Sunnyside, or whether it's at Lefty Gomez, the concept of participatory design. So you have to step back and say, you know, how big of each detention basin do you want to have? If you maxed out Sunnyside at its maximum capacity, and when we say that, that would include about a 14-foot berm to hold the water back, that'd be about 77 acre-feet of that. Let's call it 150. Let's just go with the more generous numbers. But clearly, the idea of a 14-foot berm is not going to pass muster with anybody. So, what Stetson did was take it down to about an eight-foot berm, and when you go there, you get to about 56 acre-feet. So, if you do the math and the subtraction and all of that, we're somewhere in the 90 acre-feet of uncaptured water that we have to find, and you can call it Lefty or some other detention basin. But unless we capture that, and again, let's call it that 150 acre-feet, we flood. And I think that's what your question correctly does into, and that's what Tony's talking about.
Is that accurate, Tony, that that would ideally capture about 56 acre-feet at Sunnyside?
Well, like, yeah, like as.
56 with the lower berm.
That's correct.
Would need to mitigate that flood, that flow by about a total of 150 acre-feet?
That's correct, above Fairfax.
Okay. And then, has Escrow closed on the purchase yet?
Yes, it has.
And I assume that the county did tests to determine it's geologically suitable to serve that purpose?
There, so, there was, there'll be ongoing feasibility of that type of suitability, but as part of the purchase, there was, there was no issues geologically speaking.
Okay, so you did do some testing on that? And?
I just wanted to speak, Craig Tackery, Public Works, we've been asked on a direction of council not to delve into the details about the Sunnyside site due to the litigation. So, we want to talk about it, we want to come back, but I think now's not the right time.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you did some, at least some preliminary testing. And I was curious, too, what was the, can you reveal the purchase price, Ed?
Yes, it was $3.8 million.
And will the litigation that's been initiated, is that going to delay the process? Just wondering if that's going to gum things up, or?
I don't know the answer to that. I would hope not, but it's hard to say.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, I think Barbara had a question.
Yeah, I just have a simple question, which, going back to your slides where you talked about 65% from detention basins and 35% from other creek measures. Something that's always occurred to me is, I realize everybody's looking for, you know, controlling the 100-year flood event, but I'm wondering why we aren't doing more of those creek measures now, because to the extent that we can, we're not always going to get a 100-year flood. We may get a 50-year flood event. And so, I guess it sounds like we continue to put certain steps in the way, and I, I'm not against those steps, I may not be supportive of all the locations, but I guess I'm wondering, why aren't we doing that now? Because to the extent that we can mitigate some flood event, which won't be a 100-year flood event, wouldn't that be a good idea?
So, I too am a big proponent of the in-creek measures. I spent most of my career restoring creeks. It's an exciting and rewarding career. And we eventually want to do that, and we may be doing it sooner rather than later. The challenges are the timing and the progression of those improvements. In other words, you might improve one area and cause impact to someone downstream. Coupled with that is the district, nor the town, nor other towns don't own a majority of these properties where these improvements have to be made. So there's a lot of coordination with the property owners, there's a lot of permitting challenges. The idea would be, in a perfect world, create detention so that you have really good control of those peak flows, and then, working downstream towards upstream, start doing those in-creek improvements. The bridge replacements that are happening, those are sort of the first step. So those, those actually might be in place as one of the first projects.
I guess the only thing I will say is, I think what I heard you say is that if you do something one place, you could have negative impacts in other places. And I think we should really kind of line those out, what those are, but I would also say, having worked in a variety of things, having to work with property owners on agreements, why not get started now? Because if you're in the mode of, let's wait till we get these detention basins, we saw what happened with Memorial Park, is that we need to get started now on what we can that will not cause negative harm, so that we can reduce some of this. And if we're waiting for three years down the road, I mean, the bridges are still going to take time, or four years down the road, or five years down the road to get started, we are going to hit roadblocks, and there may be certain property owners that will require a lot more time. So I guess I would just urge the county with Supervisor Rice here that where we will not cause negative harm, let's get started on more than just the bridge replacements, the creek measures that a lot of people keep asking for. And I understand that what you're talking about is, best-case scenario, we're getting 35% reduction, but to me, even if we can get some of those, and we can get 20% reduction, that may help us.
Yes, good point, and a lot of that coordination with the property owners is happening in San Anselmo as we speak, and could start early in the Sleepy Hollow neighborhood. And you're right, we need to start looking at all the areas.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from council? I have one question, actually. You had mentioned that there is one scenario, or one option in the package of options, which is no detention. And I wondered, then, what is the plan if there is no detention? Or what are the, what's in the toolbox, then, for that option?
So just to clarify, that is, that option is under the grant migration only. In other words, the money that was identified for Memorial, that's one of the options to take that money. It's not for the whole program. And really, that one could become challenging, because the amount of in-creek improvements that would have to be done to be equal to what Memorial Park would have provided could be a challenge, but is one, is definitely one alternative that we're looking at, and it may, it may become the one that is the preferred alternative or the best alternative, in which case, we would be looking at significant creek improvements, as well as ensuring that the bridge replacements go per schedule.
Okay, and then we're looking at dealing with San Anselmo's desired projects versus Fairfax's. It's the grant migration that would, for the whole district, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's go ahead and go out to the public for public comment, and so if you have something you'd like to say, please go ahead and line up, or?
Hello, James Fair, 68 Canyon Road. Hello, everyone. I tried to take some notes, I didn't have a pen, so I put a note in my phone here. The question I had was that with acre-feet, it gets kind of confusing, and so, something was like, that detention basin would reduce the flood in town by like maybe two inches, or something like that, was the number that I had calculated, or somebody showed me at one point. So essentially, if this detention basin is put in, instead of 12 or 18 inches in town, you end up with 16 inches of water in town. Seems like a lot of money to spend to still have 16 inches of water downtown. So I'm not sure that that's a good idea. I don't live close enough to the site to be super concerned, but I think to myself, if we're going to spend money, let's make sure that it's going to do a lot of good. I thought Barbara made some good points about the creek improvements, whatever we could do to improve the creeks as we, as the water moves through Fairfax downstream, I think we should be doing those. And then I guess it's just a general question in terms of, does anybody know, has there been even any work done in the seven or eight years since we've been collecting fees for this? Has there been any work done? Because I can't find any work that's been done. And I know the bridges take a while, and there's environmental impacts and so forth, but we got to move a little faster. We've got to get some stuff done. I mean, even small projects could be done that would help mitigate some of the. do to improve the creeks as we, as the water moves through Fairfax downstream, I think we should be doing those. And then I guess it's just a general question in terms of, does anybody know, has there been even any work done in the seven or eight years since we've been collecting fees for this? Has there been any work done? Because I can't find any work that's been done. And I know the bridges take a while, and there's environmental impacts and so forth, but we've got to move a little faster. We've got to get some stuff done. I mean, even small projects could be done that would help mitigate some of the flooding and so forth. I think that that-
Since the earliest days, funding for creek improvements have been part of the budget, and have been undertaken by each of the towns.
All right. That's good. But I'm just curious if we know if there's any work that's been done anywhere throughout the flood district. And then, sorry, Peter had the exact questions I had, because that slide that says 65% from detention basins is detention basins throughout the entire flood district, you might say. So it's not going to be even close to that from Sunnyside, which you guys nailed in on, which was great. I think that's it. Thank you all very much. I appreciate you guys' work up there. I appreciate you doing what you can for Fairfax. Thanks, everybody, for coming out.
Mayor, can we ask Tony to respond to the impacts that the detention basins will have?
If you will, Tony.
So just to clarify, the slide that showed the 64% and the 36%, that was for Fairfax. That is not a program-wide analysis. That's just looking at what those two measures do at the town hall location on the creek. I can't remember if there was more to that question, or-
It's the question of how many, if detention is put in, how many inches of-
So, I'm not sure where that number comes from, but we haven't completed any of the engineering to look at what, you know, it all depends on what the creek measures are, as well as the detention basin measures that are finally achieved. And it's really, the detention basins by themselves don't really provide a lowering of the water surface elevation. What they're doing is shaving off that peak flow at the right times. It's the combination of the creek improvements and upstream detention that ultimately lowers the water surface elevation.
Okay. Tony, I also heard him asking what projects, or what has actually been done since the inception of the fee?
So as Councilmember Weinshof had mentioned, there, granted, they're small projects, but in fact, it hasn't been posted to our website, but there was a piece on KCBS Radio highlighting some concrete removal projects that were ongoing in the town of San Anselmo. At this point, most of the projects that have been completed have been on the local level, using, leveraging the funds from the program. We hope, once we get through this EIR process, that we really hit the ground running and start to build something, or improve, make these improvements.
Just a suggestion, it might be good to quantify what those creek mitigation projects are somewhere, because there's a lot of, you know, interest in knowing what's been done on that front. So maybe, just a suggestion, if you maybe include that on your webpage somewhere, that, I think that would be helpful. I'm certainly curious to sort of see what the aggregate work that's been done by the flood district on creek improvements, that would be helpful.
You bet.
Okay, was there more public comment?
Just a point for Peter, because Peter's raising a great point. Folks, if they don't see demonstrable movement of earth, often wonder where a project is. But Peter's raising a great point, because before you can go forward on the concept of, first of all, don't do any harm, you have to study this. Nobody in the history of this valley had studied the hydrology of this place. It took quite a number of years, and close to $3 million, to really get the environmental, and the economic, and the engineering, and the hydrology down. And I also might point out that there was substantial opposition and litigation, which completely sidetracked this entire project at its birth for about two years. So when we look back over that time period, you really have to shave that back a little bit. And then understand the substantial work that is, it's not just, I realize I'm telling you something, you know, that you just don't go out and start moving things. You've really had to study. At this point, through Stetson engineers' modeling, we have a very comprehensive understanding of how the creeks and the watershed works, particularly in a watershed that has been quite interestingly disturbed over the last 100, 150 years. We're not starting from scratch here. We're trying to manipulate a part of the world that we have substantially impacted. Clearly, if we were starting from virgin territory, we would be having a much different conversation. But thanks for the question.
Okay, thanks, David. Public comment? Hi, Denise.
Hi. Denise Larson, Scenic Road. I just want to say, it's also not just creeks, it's also all the waterfall that comes down all the hills that we live in. And I myself have been out in the middle of the night more than once over the many years I've owned my home. But there were some improvements made by the town. I've asked for three years for a corrugated 10-foot piece of pipe to be replaced, that's rotted out in the bottom, that means it's up like this, the rocks come down, get stuck in there, and we have flooding that comes down, lots of mud, rock, that takes a lot of time for the city to clean up. I've called for, I think it went over two years ago, and substantially takes away soil as it hits the curb, and again, runs it all the way down the street. I did a call again last year, they said they might put a pipe down the inside. It's just, it's not that big of a deal to come in and, the pipe's under this much of soil, dig it up, put a new one in, but I think that's also an issue. That I have, since I live up on the hills, I'm already impacted by that, and other folks are. So I would like the town to focus on getting responses to areas where there's flooding, where it could be a simple solution to these, how our soil is running off on the hills in the water. Thanks.
Well, that's an easy one. Garrett, can you report back to us next month on this one? Thanks.
Ms. Larson, where is that? Maybe you could tell us, and tell Garrett a little more precisely where that problem-
Yes, I'm at 174 Scenic, so it's right past Bay Road, and there's a hairpin turn past my house, and there was actually a beautiful job that the city did, I don't know where the funding came from, for putting the concrete in a culvert, and some large metal stakes in the ground, I mean, big ones, to stop the debris that would back up and plug up the hole. But there's just a small pipe on top where it comes down the hill, runs, goes right underneath. And I've cleaned that out every year, but I can't be out there every night, and it really makes a mess when it overflows.
By the way, I'll tell you where the money came from. It came from your generous tax dollars.
Good, I'm glad, because it was needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. More public comment. Why don't you come ahead, and then we'll go back left.
Hi, good evening, Diana Purdue, Scenic Road. And I'm just wondering, is there going to be a vote on whether the people of Fairfax even want this basin? Like, San Anselmo was afforded a vote for Memorial Park, and I'm wondering, will this be on our ballot at some point?
Not by us.
Well, are you the only one who gets to choose?
So, San Anselmo was the subject of a referendum, and that's why it went on the ballot? And we don't, that could happen here as well, but that wasn't something the town council put on the ballot.
But the residents sort of insisted that they wanted it on the ballot.
They did what's called the referendum process.
Is Sunnyside, is that in-town property, is that county property?
It's actually not in our jurisdiction, so, a vote would be, I don't know what a vote would be, it'd be advisory, that you would send some letter to the county saying you don't like the idea, but it's not within our jurisdiction.
Right, and that's one difference, Diana, is that detention basin at Memorial Park was on property, you know, owned by the town of San Anselmo. This is something on county land, so we wouldn't be able to have any direct control governmentally on that.
That's unfortunate.
Okay, next.
Janu Školodějček, Glen Drive. I have studied the Stetson's report, and I would like to point out that the goal of the report is to design a system of detention basins that would work for the Ross Valley. Stetson engineers considered four different scenarios, combination of a number of detention basins. Each of the scenarios included either Memorial Park or San Domenico School. None of these two can be considered an option right now. So none of the scenario that is in the Stetson engineers' reports is valid anymore. You may say that, okay, these two sites don't affect Fairfax. Yes, so from the Fairfax point of view, Memorial Park or San Domenico doesn't matter. There are other flaws in the report. For example, we only, they only talk about reducing the flow. So my question is, for how long are you going to reduce this flow, before your detention basin fills up? Do you have an answer for this?
Tony, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, that's a good question, actually. Unlike a lot of detention basins in other parts of the country, these basins may go five years, 10 years, and never fill up. The actual duration could be a couple hours, it could be only a couple days. But those are the, those are the types of scenarios that we're going to really look at, once we have a site, and once we kind of know what we can obtain there as far as volume. But essentially, it's only, as was pointed out, about the 100-year flow versus less flows, it's really to shave off these extreme peaks of flow. So there could be times where they don't fill up, they don't need to fill up.
Other public comment, please.
Hi, Mark Hamerman, Shadow Creek. I think it was people from my neighborhood that suggested this be put on the agenda tonight. I was working late tonight, just got here, I don't see anybody from my neighborhood except my wife. So, I was keeping my seat warm. Maybe I can provide some insight as to why people in my neighborhood brought this up. I think we had mixed feelings about the basin at Sunnyside until the county started soliciting our input, and I use that in quotations. So we were all sent a letter indicating that the county had some interest in the site, and that they would keep us posted and involved in the process. And the next thing we knew, the county purchased the site. We were out of the loop. So we voiced an objection, we started having meetings with the county. And without going into a great deal of detail, some meetings that really changed my mind about the advisability of the basin. I think many of us feel that the county just doesn't have its act together, that the planning process has not been a professional one. And considering the cost and the risks of the project, we don't have confidence that the county is actually capable of doing a good job. I know I don't have time to go into this, but that's the reason that I'm opposed to Sunnyside at this particular time. And I think it reflects the thought of many individuals in our neighborhood. To the extent that we are in Fairfax, even though that the Sunnyside side is not in Fairfax, people who live in Fairfax, namely, we, will be impacted. And I think that's why my neighbors decided to bring this up.
Okay, Frank.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, town council members. Frank Agar, Meadowway and Fairfax. And it's a, it's a great photo sitting up there on the screen. Flood Zone 9's flood mitigation plan is consultant-driven, it's big-ticket items. In 1931, the county and Fairfax diverted Fairfax Creek at Belinus Road, and installed a culvert under Belinus Road, Sherman and Dominga, to San Anselmo Creek. It used to run downtown to Broadway, under the buildings, and then out by the post office, and met up with San Anselmo Creek. It now meets up with the San Anselmo Creek, over by Dominga. In 1974, Fairfax built the town hall annex over Fairfax Creek, and you'll see it right there. In 1974, I objected to building it over the creek, saying it would flood. Fairfax's consulting engineer said, Frank, you and I will never see that town hall extension flood in our lifetime. I've seen it flood twice, 1982 when I was mayor, and 2005 when I just left the mayorship. I think David Weins, well, I don't know, I forgot who came in as mayor in '05, but it's twice it's flooded. In 1982, Fairfax flooded from the hillside roads that turned into rivers. I mean, every hillside street in Fairfax was flowing like a river. It was unbelievable, the amount of water that came off the hills. That, that, the undersized culvert under Belinus at Sherman and Dominga is really what caused the flooding downtown Fairfax. Flood Zone 9 can put two detention basins on the west end. We had two detention basins back in the '40s, '50s, and '60s out there on the west end. Smith Lake, where Cannon Village is, and the Smith Branch Stock Pond, where Village West You know, unless the current culvert under Belinus Road is enlarged, it's still going to flood. It's still going to flood in downtown Fairfax. The 1958 Fairfax general plan said, the way to reduce flooding in downtown Fairfax was to enlarge or daylight the culvert under Belinus, Sherman, and Dominga. Now, I think that is one of their options, I think they're talking about that as a possible option. That should be option number one, to save downtown Fairfax from flooding. But we need to clean the creeks, we need to remove collapsed concrete retaining walls, remove the trees that are growing in the creek, raise certain structures out of the floodplain, including Fairfax Town Hall and Extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Could I just ask that of you, Tony? Is that an option that's being explored? The enlarging, the enlarging of the culvert under Belinus?
There are 46 different improvements, including that, within the Fairfax Creek area, so, again, it goes back to the timing. And the reason why things like this happened historically is nobody thought of the overall watershed and the impacts of doing something in one particular location. So that's what we're trying to avoid, is any kind of domino effect or impacts, once one thing is done, without other things in place, so.
Have you specifically looked at that, though, the feasibility of that? I mean, you mentioned that and 45 other potential options are out there, but I'm wondering more specifically, if you've actually, if anyone's evaluated that for its efficacy versus cost compared to other measures?
Not by itself like that, no. Not individually, as doing that one thing only. But it's part of an overall series of things that could be done in Fairfax.
Just to speak to Peter's point, if you just step back from that and look at the economics of it, we have contacted FEMA on two occasions. They, we're not interested in helping us remove our town hall to another location.
No, I'm sorry, I thought he was talking about the culvert replacement.
Yeah, but it's not just the culvert.
Oh, I understand.
Well, I was talking specifically about the culvert enlarging.
But it's not, but you can't just simply take that little nugget. You have to take the culvert, you also have to consider what's above the culvert, are you going to daylight that creek? Is there private property, as we know there is, along the way? When you begin to add this up, and begin to attach even conservative dollar figures to this, you begin to blow through a program that, remember, in its totality, will collect in the neighborhood of about $40 million. That $40 million must not only pay for incremental improvements, it must be leveraged against other potential grants, federal and state, that might be available. So we cannot simply, in the entire Ross Valley, look at this important, single project that might require such a vast expenditure percentage of the fee money that we've acquired. But if I could just speak to one other thing, Frank raises an interesting question, I think another- I think another commenter did too. And it's something that I think we're all seeing, and it might be a little bit of an inconvenient truth, but even in our own times, living here, the atmospheric water that is coming down on us, I think, has changed from the old days. It's no longer an Irish spring followed by a couple of days of sun, followed by another rain, a little bit of sun, and going on for months and months and months. We're facing, and certainly on that miserable morning of December 31st, torrents of rain. They call it atmospheric rivers. This water is coming at us at furious, absolutely furious rates. And so the concept of the detention, as Tony quite rightly points out, it's not to hold back the entire creek, it's to shave down this massive amount of dump that is coming on us so that our creeks can work as they will and as we improve them. I might add one other thing. And Tony is nailing the issue that's very important, which is that everything that we correct is interconnected with everything else that we correct. So when you replace the bridges with their abutments sticking into the creek, when you begin to make the improvements to the creek sides, private property, public property, you are turning our creeks into a much, much more efficient delivery system for water. So if you're not holding it back at the top, the extra that we must, you're talking about having it flood at even greater speeds toward us. And it's not just us, it's our friends and family in San Anselmo, Ross, and down the way at all. We are all standing in together. I think Supervisor Rice coined the phrase "all for one and one for all," borrowing the idea, which is absolutely essential. We are not just single actors here. We're acting for the first time as an entire Ross Valley and trying to solve the problem collaboratively.
Okay, thank you, David. Is there any other public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, so we don't have any action to take. It was a discussion item. And I would ask you, thank you so much, Tony, for the presentation. Thank you for being here, Supervisor Rice. And please keep us closely posted as to how this proceeds. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we are moving on. What time is it? Are we good? Does anyone need a quick break? We need five minutes and we will be back to discuss item 16. So we will continue with the agenda with agenda item number 16. And I would like to, before we ask Garrett to deliver the staff report, I would like to take a moment really briefly and let you guys know and then ask what your thoughts are on the following. And that is that I have been watching the town community forum, online forum, very closely, reading the responses, looking at the graphs as they grow or shrink or change. The responses are amazing. We have 500 responses. 200 of those are unregistered, which means that you haven't given your name or whether you live in Fairfax. But 300 of those responses are registered. So we know, I don't think we can tell exactly how many live in Fairfax. Is that true?
Yeah.
Oh, you can? So 300 of those registered are Fairfax?
No, last time I checked, it was like 25 or 30 people were actually outside Fairfax, but the majority are in Fairfax.
Okay, excellent. So reading that about, you know, three hours ago, what I noticed is that there were, out of those 300 responses, there were 238 responses that said, no, don't consider, don't consider piloting closing Bellinas, and 227 responses that said, no, don't consider and don't pilot making Bellinas Road a one-way. So with, what I'm here to do is ask the council, before we begin the item, what you think is the appropriate thing for us to do to start this meeting so that we can get the most out of the discussion. The other piece is that I do need to say that this means that there were numbers of people that were interested in exploring this as an option. So we would be making a decision on behalf of the community based on this, and we need to make sure that we're comfortable doing that. So do you have any thoughts on that before we begin with the staff report?
Mayor? So I would say thank you for reading the community forum and giving us that feedback. Also, having been at the workshop on Saturday, which started out a little different than what we planned, but ultimately, I think it was good. And I also want to say thank you to you, Mayor, for really going with the flow and having people take public comment. I think some would have just been dismayed and canceled the meeting, but I think it was the best thing for Fairfax, for people to give their feedback. And then we actually got a bunch of people down to work, including myself, sitting at a table. So I think out of that also came out the thoughts of, don't pilot closing Bellinas Road, don't pilot the idea of no parking on one side. And my thoughts are, if we could take those off the table, there are still other valuable pieces, some of which might also peel off as we continue the process. And I'm sure many will peel off. But I think that will also, if we could do that, I think for those many people that are very concerned about that, we might be able to get down to work on some of the other elements that really came out. For example, people are really interested in the parcade, and there is grant money for the parcade, and looking at sidewalks, which would be really nice to have around the parcade, along with fixing what is kind of a mess, that parking structure. So there are other things that I think came out that we could work on that would improve the town center, and I think more people are really interested in those type of things. So that's my two cents.
I agree entirely.
Does it work?
No, she fixed it. I agree entirely with, no, I don't think so.
It was working.
Oh, good heavens. Wow, that's a long way to say I entirely agree with Barbara.
Okay, well, it was an interesting process and I think cathartic for the community also. I feel, since I was on the G-PAC committee for quite a long time writing the general plan, I probably owe the community an explanation.
I don't mean to interrupt you guys, but we are going to have a lengthy discussion, and we're going to be able to talk about lots of things and then, and listen to public comment before we do. I want to know if we can, in all good faith, take this, these two pieces off the table so that we can continue the discussion. And then there will be plenty of time to give the whole thing.
Well, I am actually speaking to that.
Okay, then I will be quiet.
So the general plan committee put together a workshop in here, '04, '05, like that, where the idea came from the public to close Bellinas, make it one-way, something like that. And that was something that the G-PAC committee was kind of surprised to hear. It had come up in conversation before and they said, well, you know, maybe that's, you know, not a good idea. However, the public came up with this, a number of different workshop tables, similar to what we had on Saturday, came up with this idea, and then we put all the ideas up on the board, and a lot of people voted for those things. So like it or not, that is part of our democratic process. It's in, at that point, in the hopper. And so we had, as one of the alternatives for the downtown plan, there's a lot of different things in the downtown plan that potentially, that are worth looking at, like circulation and stuff that we will get to in our conversation later, but I'm just going to speak to the Bellinas part. That was in there. When the general plan came up for approval on this council, 2012, I believe, we looked at all the different sections of the general plan and looked at that downtown plan, said, well, you know, this is not baked all the way. We need to put this on the back burner and come back and revisit this because it does not necessarily reflect what the community wants. I don't, I think you and I, David, we're the only two on this council that are still here, but we all voted to take the downtown section and put it on the back burner and not approve it. And this aspect that has had a lot of public reaction to it was one of the major reasons why. I'm probably not the only one, but, you know, it's an area we all share and it's important. So we put that on the back burner to bring it back to the public at a later date. Now, it's the later date, okay? And I think that this council is about to speak to whether we take that part off of the table. I'm in favor of stepping back from that because I'm one of the ones who thought, well, it might be interesting, but let's see. I don't think it's maybe going to fly. And in fact, it's not going to fly. So anyway, I thought that it was important for the community to know that part of the democratic process. This is not an idea that this council came up with and tried to hoodwink the community into. This is the democratic process at work. And as clunky as it seems, it's better than any other system we've got. So we've got to work through the process. It's important for the community to be heard. It's important to put your views in what we all want to share, is that downtown is functional and that works for the town of Fairfax. And that's what this process is about. And I'm glad that everybody cares so much about Fairfax. I certainly do, too. So in terms of speaking to that section of Bellinas, short answer is, yeah, I'm ready to take that off the table.
Thank you. And just one other point of clarification, too. The idea of closing the Bellinas, that section of Bellinas Road, was kind of contingent on other things being adopted first, including extending the LC Bank Street through an intersection to connect directly with Sir Francis Drake, which would take all that traffic off of Bellinas Road. So just as a little bit of background information, some people, I think, got the idea that we were just going to, the option being considered was just closing Bellinas without doing anything else. And it really was sort of just a contingency based upon other ideas happening first, but somehow it got put front and center as the lightning rod issue that a lot of people reacted to. And yeah, based on just the enormous, broad and intense opposition to that idea, I think, yeah, I don't think, I think it would be irresponsible for us to try to promote that idea any further because I think people have spoken pretty clearly on that, so.
Okay, so I'm hearing that we have unanimous support to begin the conversation without the permanent closure of Bellinas or making Bellinas a one-way going forward. We don't need to vote on that, right? Okay. So carrying on. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Garrett for a more broad staff report, which is, this item is a discussion item about the workshop on Saturday. And then we will go to public comment after we ask questions.
So just to echo what the council was saying, actually, in our staff report, this is mainly a placeholder. And Matt Tacker, who actually conducted the workshop, had prepared a little short, two-page memo on his initial impressions. His impressions were the same as the council's, which is, there seemed to be broad consensus to not further explore the concept of closing Bellinas Road or making it one-way. And there's lots of concerns with the community, anything you do in terms of options, you really should consider minimal impact to parking. So the staff report really was going to say, we're just going to let you know that. It's pretty clear, we're not going to be recommending any further exploration of those concepts. But also in November, we'll come back to you with a more broader report about the concepts that we think the community from the workshop wanted to explore. For those of you who attended the workshop, about 120 people plus attended. Obviously, it got a little chaotic. I'd even go so far as to say, for 20 or 30 minutes, we perhaps lost control of the meeting. However, oddly, and I think it might be the Fairfax way, everyone calmed down. We got hundreds of comments, either verbally. People actually participated and put the posted notes on the sheets on the walls. And we did have about 50 people or so actually participate in the table exercise. So at the end of the day, I think we did get a lot of feedback from the community, which was the whole goal of the workshop to start with. And I agree with Vice Mayor Reed that some of my general comments regarding the democratic process, because that was raised at the workshop, is yes, back in 2005, you know, with the G-PAC process, that there was the concept brought up of pedestrianizing or making a pedestrian mall out of Bellinas. And back in 2012, when the council actually adopted the general plan, I think in respect to that community process and participation of the citizens, it acknowledged that, okay, this is something we're not saying is going to happen, this is just something we agree that we would further explore. And fast forward to now, obviously, it's 10 years ago, council's discussion was, let's ask the community whether or not they think it's a good option, just to explore. Not going to do it, just going to explore. Now, obviously, as the mayor indicated, over 500 people responded to our online survey and the comments received at the meeting, and it's pretty clear that 80% plus minus really don't want to further that, explore that concept. But then, this brings me to my point of the challenges I see in the democratic process that we have today, and it's not necessarily just in Fairfax. And I think the challenge for people is understanding that your opinion and comment is just as important as your neighbor's opinion and comment. And the challenge is having a civil discussion over that topic. And so I think the workshop actually represented the best and worst of what I consider a democratic process. The worst being, we had some shouting down with speakers, perhaps disruption of the workshop, but the best was the participation. Even while people were talking, people were participating. Maybe they weren't speaking, but they're putting things on the posted notes. And more importantly, people stayed for the table exercise, and we got tons of comments. So one, I like to say kudos for the people that did attend because it was a Saturday morning, it ended up paying over four and a half hours, so that's great for people that attended. Two, people who participated and placed their post-its on the boards, that was great. Kudos to those who stayed for the table exercise. And I like to point out, kudos to those citizens who actually had concerns of what the purpose of the workshop was. They actually stayed and participated, and I think that's very impressive because they engaged in the dialogue. And while they may have disagreed, we have their input and that understanding. So I think that's great. And part of all the workshop, and I know it's a challenge of staff, is, one, education outreach, letting people know what the purpose of the workshop is and getting people to attend. Two is, and that's on us, is building that trust factor. So when staff says, hey, everyone, we want to know, here's a workshop, and we'd like to explore issues, we'd like to know from you, would you even like to explore the issue? And we'd like to come down and get your input. And so we want people to trust us that this isn't a done deal. This isn't a process in which we're hoping that we know what we want to do and we're hoping the citizens will support it. We're truly in this process, just trying to get that feedback, and the council's trying to get that feedback. And I really have to give kudos to the council. That was a little chaotic in the beginning, you really stuck it out. I think the mayor did a great job, you brought it back, we got the feedback. And I agree 100%. I don't think we should explore some of those concepts. I think we'd like to make sure the community understands that. I think we like to avoid those concerns or the anxiety created by that. And that's great, the council took the initiative to do that. And I think that pretty much concludes my commentary on the workshop.
Okay, do we have any, would anyone like to say anything in particular now, before we go out and hear from the public? Okay, Peter.
Yeah, I just want a couple things, a few things that I think we should have done, could have done better in hindsight. could've done better in hindsight. I think we should've communicated better that this was an ongoing process because a lot of people arrived with the idea of, "Oh, my God, who cooked up this idea for changing downtown?" And, you know, like John said, this has been going on for—going on 12 years now. So I think we—we could've done a better job of communicating that this was part of a—an ongoing process and building on prior participation. And I think that would've eliminated some of the feeling of mistrust by people in the room, just born out of a misunderstanding in a sense that we somehow had a fait accompli that we're just asking people to sign off on. I would suggest if we're doing especially another workshop with tables and so forth and moving around the room—we have it at the pavilion. I think physically, the space was too constrained for—for the amount of people we had, which was great to have that much—that much participation. And it was an interesting morning, the first part. I was a little concerned because I think it did get a little out of control. I did get a lot of comments from people about a lack of civility by some of the participants. And I would just kind of like to ask people to try to be mindful of—the impact of—I—I think most—most people were—were—conducted themselves very well, but, you know, when things get heated and name-calling and so forth, it really can kind of poison the process. But I was very happy that people stuck it out and was also glad that the conversation, too, also turned into a more productive area. And I—I also wanted to compliment Renee, too, for keeping your cool under a lot of pressure and a lot of—a lot of emotions in the room. And I think once we got past those initial hurdles, it actually was very, very productive. We had about 10 groups of people, about six people at a table, coming up with various ideas, discussing pros and cons. And then people did a group, did presentations of the whole group about what their table did. And a lot of really great ideas came up, a lot of really new ideas. And I think that's actually what we were looking for, was to get a lot of input from the community, sort of crowdsourcing the planning process. And so I think what ended up happening was actually very, very productive and very good. And so I would just suggest, moving forward at—the at our next workshop, you know, let's give better notice. And let's also do a little better job of explaining the process for people that are coming into it at that time. And I would suggest having it at the pavilion, just so we can accommodate more people more comfortably.
Thank you, Peter. Can I ask that council pause as we're going into these summaries of the discussion before we've heard from the public? And then come back up here and we can see how to—we wanna respond and how we wanna close the item. So please, anyone who would like to speak, let's open public comment. Okay. Hi, Suzanne. Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you, Cindy.
Push the button, Suzanne.
Cindy Ross, Fairfax, California. Comments regarding the workshop. The main thing I heard residents saying that they wanted for the town center was for our sidewalks to be fixed. I have a suggestion for where we can get the funding, as follows. Fairfax has a sidewalk matching grant program. Check the website for details. Since the one-paid consultant refunded the $3,000—I'm not sure if that happened, or—I would like the town to match that, providing an additional $3,000. Next, we had well over 100 citizens donate their time for four hours on Saturday morning. At $50 an hour, my rate, which I believe is fair to extend to everyone, each of us already donated $200 for at least $200, $20,000. With the town matching that, we already have $46,000 that can be applied to sidewalk repair. Since the town has tabled part of the plan, the closure of Bolinas Road, for which the other consultant was paid $13,000, we should get a partial refund. While I don't wanna cheat him out of money he was promised, I figure that if we ask for $2,000 back and the town adds in another $2,000 for the sidewalk grant program, we're already up to $50,000. That should go a long ways towards fixing the most hazardous of the sidewalks. And now, this is—remember, this is Cindy, not me. I would like Renee to disclose how much the proposed steam cleaning of the sidewalks is going to cost. Clean sidewalks might be nice after they're repaired. I don't think we should be cleaning, wasting money cleaning cracks and broken parts. That's not going to prevent any more people from falling, nor will satisfy any ADA requirements. A complaint to ADA should be our next step, since I'm sure that the sidewalks and crosswalks hazards are a major violation. Able-bodied people have enough trouble navigating our town on foot. It's dangerous, and in places, it's impossible to navigate with a wheelchair or a mobility scooter from downtown past the police station to get to the 7-Eleven. Also, it's pretty dangerous—I'm just adding this—by the post office? Before we even hear anymore about any more plans, I wanna know the definite amount of money that we have to spend. When I met with the mayor, she was initially off, thinking the budget was much higher than it is. I don't wanna say the amount I was told because she wasn't sure if it was right, but it was a day before the workshop, and Renee, you apparently also had no idea of how much money the town actually has to spend, even though they've already spent money on consultants and salaries for a meeting for us to devise a plan. How are we, the public, supposed to devise a plan when we have no idea how much money we actually have? Let me read—
Okay, Suzanne, your time is up.
Oh, it's Cindy.
It's three minute for both Cindy, I'm sorry.
So—
Yeah.
I can't do it.
Cindy gets three minutes.
Oh.
And, yes.
So—
Okay. So thank you. You can leave the letter with our clerk.
Leave the letter into—
Yes.
Cindy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Cindy.
Cindy. No, I know. I got that. Hi, Bruce.
Bruce Ackerman, Valley Road. So, yes, I attended that workshop and was also on the G-PAC at the same time that Commissioner Reed was. I remember it a little bit differently. I—I think we need to really—this is an opportunity for us to step back and look overall at how communication occurs within our democracy. And I think there's a—there's a lot we can look at. We can look at the—the way the Brown Act affects council members, planning commission members, and—and members of other committees, such as G-PAC, who are sometimes constrained in what we can even say, while at the same time, citizens are asking us, quite reasonably, what we think about something. So that's—maybe we can get some legal advice on how we can communicate freely because, after all, the spirit of the Brown Act was exactly for that, and so it shouldn't be stopping us. I wanna take some responsibility, as I would believe John should as well, because our fingerprints are on the wording of that town center element, and it's not worded very clearly. To—to say what I believe—actually, I—I think that Commissioner Lox did a—described it very well, what it actually was intended to say, which nobody in their right mind would ever have thought about closing Bolinas Road without opening another route. Nobody would've thought of that, and we didn't think about that either. And the—the group—the—the two Saturday charrettes that came up with that idea did not think about it that way. The idea was to first open up Elsie and Bank, and then, if that worked out, then the town— and it says this clearly enough in the town center plan, where the town would have options on Bolinas Road. Unfortunately, and this is the communication issue, the—it ended up being presented over and over again as the close Bolinas Road idea, without reminding people that—that really would be a much later step and an optional step. And so, of course, that turned into a shitstorm, which it did. So there's a lot on our end, speaking for all of us who come out into the daylight and work for the town. But there's something else going on, which is—and I'm running out of time, but I did a little study of the Nextdoor thread that, right before the workshop, there were 307 comments, which sounds like an incredible number of people, but three-quarters of those comments came from 15 people. Three-quarters of those comments came from 15 people. And on that thread, there were repeated corrections of the misapprehensions that, first of all, there was a "they" out there that was foisting this upon the town, which there was not. It was the town citizens that came up with the idea. Secondly—
Bruce, you need to finish up.
Okay.
That's it, three minutes.
Secondly, the—the Bolinas Road, then Bank Street issue. Both of those were corrected repeatedly but were ignored, and that's part of why the shitshow happened.
Bruce, thank you very much.
You know what? I think Bruce could effectively be seen as speaking for a group because he's actually talking about what came back from the G-PAC process, too. And I concur with a lot of that. I'm sorry I didn't explain—
I can wrap up pretty quickly.
You explained it very well.
And I have—I have a written thing that I can give to the council members. But I just wanted to say that there are—I—I'm appreciating the discussion tonight. I appreciated Garrett's response to it. I appreciated all the things the council members say. And I certainly agree that the Bolinas Road closure or one-way is off the table.
Okay.
That's—we're clear on that. But I'd like to step back and look at how we do things as a town, and I wanna caution my fellow citizens that when people start going into this negative space and talking about how they are doing something to us without a clear command of the facts, to be careful what you buy into.
Bruce, you have to finish up. Okay, thank you. Hi, Lisa.
Push the button.
Okay, here we go. Lisa Williams-Zigman, Bolinas Road, Fairfax. And I just have a couple comments. I don't think I'll need three minutes. I'm glad that the Bolinas Road thing sounds like it's gonna be off the table. I'm definitely opposed to that. And parking is a huge concern for us. I'm also glad that that was in the summary that people are opposed to getting rid of parking. Our family, sometimes when we wanna go out to eat, will just go straight to San Anselmo because there's just—there's no hope Friday, Saturday night finding parking in—in Fairfax. And that's sad because I love our town. I wanna support it and think global, shop local. So just emphasizing the importance of parking. Of course, I would love a pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly town. It's not like, "Everyone, just drive your car. Don't think about environmentally friendly options." If you can walk or bike, it's better, but if it's raining or you have some sort of physical disability, you need to be able to find parking, so. And then lastly, there does seem to be some misinformation out there about—or maybe I'm misinformed—chain stores being possibly welcomed in four-story buildings downtown and parking meters. And I don't know what proportion of this is true, not true, but there's like a general kind of hysteria. And so I just think getting correct information out to the community is really important because everybody—otherwise, people just get like worked up to into a frenzy, and I don't think that's good for anybody, so. Thank you.
Lisa, I appreciate it. Okay. Lisa.
Hold this button down, or it's already there. Okay, so I just wanna thank you guys for holding that town center workshop. I went over the maps with a bunch of my neighbors, both near me and across Fairfax, and it was really a transformative experience. We shared, like, all our hopes, our fears about what could happen to the downtown, and we had a lot of fun in the process. And it was really wild. I mean, I had ideas that were confirmed, ideas that I changed as a result of being part of that process. It was really fun. I met people that I haven't talked to before, and it was really a gift to be able to have that open, honest conversation with people who were like me and people who were not very like me. And learned a lot from people. And I, you know, have personally loved the idea of a pedestrian mall because I spent a lot of time in Boulder, Colorado. My mother had a tiny restaurant on the mall there, and it was a really fun community spirit. People could get their food from our little tiny restaurant and go sit outside and eat and listen to music, and it was awesome. But when I started to talk more to my neighbors, I heard about their concerns about traffic possibly being shunted down our little street, the Salominga area. And so, you know, I kind of sadly gave up that idea that it might not really work with the layout of Fairfax, but it was really great to have that conversation because we were all so creative in coming up with all of these other ideas and ways that we could perhaps retain some of those elements in a different form without closing down Bolinas. Now, I—you know, we talked about safety enhancements. We talked about needing gathering spaces. We talked about all of those things, and I was really impressed by the people who came out and worked at the kitchen table and then later in here, and the people who wandered through giving comments. It really made me feel good about Fairfax. And I wouldn't have had that experience if the meeting had gotten shut down, like it seemed like it was going to earlier in the day. And that was really hard because I really felt like, you know, we were being told, as people who'd given up our Saturday, that because another group of people had certain ideas, they were gonna close the whole meeting down, and we were never gonna get to talk to each other. And it really felt like the absolute antithesis of democracy for a short time there. And I'm feeling like, you know, I talked to neighbors after this, and they said, "I wouldn't go to that meeting. It's gonna be all angry and ugly. I don't wanna ruin my day that way." And I really feel like what's happening is that there is this spirit that is decreasing citizen engagement and really making people afraid to come to meetings and afraid of being involved. And I really wanna be thankful to the people that stayed through the entire meeting and worked on the maps, and I really hope that those ideas are actually gonna be, you know, thought about and that, you know, in another 10 years or something, you know, maybe another group of people will come and protest those, too. But, you know, I hope that those ideas will be taken seriously as we move forward. Really, democracy is somewhat about coming to consensus, and, you know, I—I really wanna thank the people that contributed that thoughtfulness and optimism that turned that day from a very bad day at the beginning to a very good day. And it's not to say that the other people didn't have important ideas. I just wish they had been shared in a different way.
Thank you, Lisa. Hi, Anya.
Good evening. I didn't have a really good time and enjoy the outcome of the event because I had to leave because it was horrifying for me to see the behavior of people in this town that I love so much. And in this horrible atmosphere of political ugliness, I can count on people like you that I've seen you work for years and years and years behind the scene. And then I go to the dog park, and I've told—I'm told that you have—that the developers have you in their pockets and that you will be building—you, like, you have control of this—you will be building four-story buildings downtown. And they know nothing. They know nothing. They have heard this hate. And I want to—and I had to leave because I was watching anarchy. I was watching people grabbing microphones, stamping, yelling, "Shut it down! Yeah, go ahead, take it over!" Flipping each other off, hurt—I mean, being so rude. And I come from 30 years in an eighth-grade classroom. That—that were glorious years and happy years for me. So I wish that I could've stayed. I had bought—we have a lot of new people on Portius with a lot of cars. And I bought three of the new residents to the meeting with me because they are so happy about being in Fairfax. It was—it—it wasn't fun. It was ugly. And I am so impressed— And I am so impressed by, by the people that work for us and for the council that represents us and listens to us. And communication needs to be improved, but in order for that to happen, there has to be somebody listening to everything you send out. And I've been very upset on several occasions when things just kind of popped up out of nowhere. But I understand that you try to communicate and just continue getting stuff out and really focusing on that, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Anya. Good evening.
Good evening. First off, I'd like to thank you guys. I don't speak the language. Somebody has to do it. Thank you. Not being a public speaker, I'm going to basically read some simple notes. My name is Stephen Wild. I live in, excuse me, I live in Deer Park, and I've spent the majority of my 49 years in Marin, right here in Fairfax. I have three basic issues I'd like to address. I've been a cyclist for 47 of those years in Marin, both for transportation and enjoyment. I absolutely want to see safe cycling accommodated. That being said, I think in all fairness, certain factions representing this town, despite their interest in a green agenda, which most of us basically share, need to reassess their priorities regarding transportation and parking. You cannot force people out of their vehicles. I'm not going to belabor the point. Second issue, the Fairfax bureaucratic process needs to be streamlined to include easier access to information, a clarity of that information, and a transparency of procedures. That's where we got in some of the trouble we've gotten in with all of this, as I see it. Excuse me. The locals need to be addressed by a better voice. Lastly, before any and all other considered design changes, there are issues that need to be addressed in this town like sidewalks and safety for all residents. One other issue that should be paramount before this council at every meeting is preserving the character of Fairfax.
Okay. Gina.
Thanks. Yes, my name is Gina Farr, Forest Avenue. I introduced myself on Saturday as a graduate of Manor School, 1969. My family donated the land for White Hill School and also for Loma Alta Open Space. To say that I'm attached to the sights and sounds and views and people of this town is an understatement. And given the outpouring of emotion that I witnessed on Saturday, I'd say that I am not alone in that attachment. From the magazine Urban Land, it talks about place is more than just a location on a map. A sense of place is a unique collection of qualities and characteristics, visual, cultural, social, and environmental, that provide meaning to a location. Now, forgive me for quoting Wikipedia, but I need to say that places said to have a strong sense of place have a strong identity and character that is deeply felt by local inhabitants. The bond between people and place is a sacred thing. Before any workshops, designs, options, we need to, I think as we all agree, first tell the residents what's happening. So, yes, there was social media. Yes, there was a banner that said, "Town Element." I had no idea what that meant. And what we didn't have is an ability to take stock of who we are, what bonds us together as a community, as a historic community, and being able to define that ineffable quality that is Fairfax. And once we do that, which I believe should come first, then we have a foundation for change. So, John, you actually underscored my point, talking about the idea, these ideas of closing Bolinas coming from the public, one-ways. You know, we can rearrange all of the pieces on a chessboard, but until we know what kind of table, what kind of foundation holds up that chessboard, then we will find ourselves in situations where we are rightfully emotional and need to have clarification as to, will those bonds be broken? What will our character, town character become if we are to get ahead of ourselves? I propose that we have a different process, and it starts with self-reflection.
Thank you, Gina.
Hi, Doug Smith, Forest Avenue. I'll be short and sweet. I've lived, I've lived in Fairfax for over two decades and Marin most of my life. I've lived in Sanderfell, Mill Valley, and I chose Fairfax because there's something small about, as small and idealistic and charming about this Alpine setting and all the history, the railroad. I mean, I've got a silent movie of a stagecoach going down Bolinas Avenue. So when I heard about closing Bolinas Avenue, I was very disturbed. I mean, obviously, the stagecoach is gone, the train station is gone. But Fairfax has such a Shangri-La, Mayberry-on-acid feeling to it that I think many people really love. And there's a reason why we've won the Pacific Sun Pole for five years in a row as the most popular town. The historic character is still here. It's just a very, very charming place. And I was here at the Saturday meeting, and I think a lot of people were upset because there was miscommunication. I think there does need to be better communication from the town. A banner that, as Gina pointed out, doesn't say something confusing. People don't know what a town element is. We basically want very slow and thoughtful changes that are rooted in the historic character of this wonderful town that we all call home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. While she's pouring water, I just want you to know that the town banner says Town Center Workshop, just for the record. I get that it didn't work, but I just wanted to say that.
First of all, I want to thank all of you and all of you because this is not the easiest town for y'all to work in. I know that we all have a lot to say. So I have been trying to educate myself so I have a better idea of what you're doing, you're doing, and what we're all doing here. And I've been reading the general plan. So in the general plan, Land Use 9.1, the goal is to preserve and restore local historical buildings and sites. Land Use 9.1.1, which was supposed to happen in year two, is to inventory and record historical buildings and sites. The planning department and the Historical Society were supposed to be doing that. I'd like to know if that was done, number one. And we were also supposed to protect the '60s, sites related to '60s music scene. Land Use 9.1.4 was, there was to be a historic designation in terms of age, style, builder, architect, site of events, and that the character of Fairfax be enhanced and protected from substantial change. That was year three to five. And I'd like to know if this inventory has been completed and how I can access it. I'm concerned because there have been comments made by council member describing this as a Wild West town that's grown bit by bit since we made silent movies here, and this is our chance to unify it. And also, in answer to a question from the public about preserving historical buildings, a staff member said that there's only one here, that's Tenol Lima, and that's not going anywhere. And does that mean that the rest of them are? I'm concerned about that. And the other thing I'm concerned about is these second-story units. If I wanted to add a second story to my house, I would have to do this major beef-up of the foundation. So are these properties that are contiguous, are they going to retrofit their foundations? Do they have to comply with the building codes? Or are they going to be bought by developers and just razed and new buildings put up? So those are my concerns.
Thank you very much. Jim? Would you be willing to answer just that last part of that question? I think that's something that, or Garrett, about the second units and foundations and...
Sure. I think any project, if they were to add a second story, would have to meet building codes. So if they have to redo the foundation, retrofit the entire building, that's what they have to make, have to do because they would have to comply. Not only that, they'd have to go through the whole design review process in our-
I think what she was referring to was the area downtown where we're talking about second units by right. And at least my understanding of that is that where there was already second stories, none. The rezoning isn't necessarily allowing for new stories. I think that's what she was alluding to.
Oh, I guess maybe I don't understand, but if you were to add a second story that doesn't exist, obviously you're going to meet building codes. If you have a second story that actually is a commercial use and you're changing occupancy to residential, you need to address building codes. In terms of the surveys, we haven't gotten around to conducting the historical surveys. That is on the list of things to do, although I will say the 1960s, Character One, I just don't recall even seeing that in the Land Use element, but we haven't done that either if we're supposed to. It is on the list of studies to be done, though.
Okay, thank you very much. You have to speak into the microphone, but please be brief so we can move on.
If it's within the power of the council to form a committee to do this, to make this task, I would be happy to volunteer to help.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay. Hi, Diana, right?
Yes, Diana. Diana Purdue, Scenic Road. And before I read what I prepared, I do want to say around 2004, I was aware of the Town Center element. And when the traffic study was done and the Bolinas Broadway interchange at Klaus was all implemented and the Center Avenue beautification, if you want to call it that, was done, I sort of thought that was it. I have never heard of anything between then and like a month ago. So that's just maybe an FYI that, I don't know, people didn't know that you were soliciting ideas all this time. So anyway, what I came tonight to do is to share my thoughts regarding the Matt Taker Planning and Designs Running the Town Center Plan Workshop, October 1st. I feel it was unnecessary to have a consultant involved. Matt is not from here. He said he had walked the town only twice, and his formula slide presentation represented all that I thought Fairfax disdained. If the fee schedule of $13,000 for his design options is a true number, I'm further appalled. I spoke to several council members and staff that day, questioning the necessity of Matt being there, and here are a few of the responses I received. Number one, he's a professional and worth the money. Number two, not everybody can lead a workshop. Number three, we wanted a neutral moderator. And number four, he's a good listener. These replies suggest to me that our elected representatives and paid town staff did not feel they should or could perform such a task. It's ironic that they cannot directly listen to the town's residents and our concerns regarding the plan that they set forth. But by bringing in a consulting company, he wasn't neutral. He did your bidding, and that's what I object to. He was your firewall. Don't you think it would have been less contentious to have our own staff as the presenter of the design? We ended up paying twice, once to our town employees to do their job, and then to a consultant to present. For myself, I really don't like the idea of reshaping the town at all. I'm not in favor, this is my personal opinion, of doing away with parking, garages, putting in parking meters, if that is an item, taking car lanes for wider sidewalks, or the pedestrian-only streets at Bolinas Avenue, which now you've taken off the table. So I would just say in Marin County, Fairfax is a minority, still retaining a country feel. Visitors and we see the charm of our town. While other towns have lost their magic by overbuilding, I hope Fairfax does not join them. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Diane.
Hi. Do I need to push it? No, no. Okay, Diane, Portius Avenue. And first, thank you for taking those two things off the table. If they were just, if they were just on the table, as John was saying, ideas that came up and then they were presented to us, and when you heard we didn't like it and you took it off. But my big concern is the money that was spent because about two years ago, when this whole thing was being proposed and I saw and I read online about all of this, I wrote to the town and I wanted to know how much it cost because they were professionally drawn with the streets closed and all of that. And it was something under $300,000. And that was then. And recently, I've asked for an updating on how much has been spent plus on the rezoning, and there is no, it's not done. So I have got paperwork from the town, and I've been told how I have to add it up myself. So, you know, this was a lesson, but the money's gone. It's the taxpayers' money. And then I see that Measure C asking for more money when I know that, when it says it's going to stay in Fairfax, it goes in the general fund and it's spent for things like this. And if you look at the federal government, the state, and now the local, I think something happens with people who get in charge of other people's money. Somehow, it's easier to spend than your own money. And I think if all of you just feel, this is like my own money, would I really spend it on this? You know, every time you make a decision, ask yourself that question, and, you know, maybe we'll do much better with our budget that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Mallory.
Hi, Mallory Guidi, Willow Avenue. I have a suggestion or to find out whether you can, when you hire a consultant, we had one, I think, last year or the year before with, I don't even remember why, it did someplace in Boston, and now we have $16,000 or $13,000 on this consultant. I think the town should vote on whether we want to spend this money on consultants and not leave that up to the staff because I think a lot of people would probably vote against it. Fairfax, somebody was talking about, has a certain feel to it. It's got a psyche, and it's the collective of all the people here. And when we have an outside consultant, they have no clue what this town is about. So they're just going to do very generic what they do that works in other places, you know? And I personally don't want this to become an other place. I don't want the Burning Man stores and the high-end design stores that get written up in the Chronicle, as the design furniture store did, to be here. I mean, I want this to be culture shock, which it's always been, the town itself. And in terms of, in terms of the parking situation, can I make some suggestions now? Is this an okay time to do that?
You just have your three minutes. You can say whatever you like.
Okay. So I would like to take out that second row of dead plants that we put in and put back the parking that was in front of the Good Earth, that was in front of the- the parking that was in front of the Good Earth, that was in front of the post office. And also, I want to consider that our parking spaces are so wide in certain parts, in front of Iron Springs and other parts of the town, where you have this three or four space between the parking. We can fit more parking in there. And I would like that to be considered, just repaint the line, so it won't cost that much money. I can't remember the rest of it, but that's basically, yes. And one other thing, and take away the plants that make the right-hand turn across from the movie theater by that, the Rhino, whichever gas station that is, so we don't back up at rush hour to the Good Earth. Put that, yeah, I know we need a bike lane, which you could have if you took away that plant lane, and make that right-hand turn onto Sir Francis Drake from Center, come back again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory.
Yeah, I'm Mark Hammerman. I live on the west side of town. And I've lived here all of 15 months, so I have a perspective that could be considered fresh and outside the box, or alternatively, maybe I don't know what I'm talking about. And I'm not sure which it is. I'm here because I found a wonderful house, and my children and grandchildren live in Marin. I'd never heard of Fairfax. And after I bought the house, I remember sitting in Perry Park one day, looking around and saying, gee, I wonder if I bought a house in the right place. This place looks a little rundown. And I moved here, and I get it now. The word that I heard on Saturday, and I didn't say a word at that meeting, was patina. And yeah, that's it. This place has a patina. And once you get rid of a patina that takes decades and decades and decades to build up, it's gone, it's gone forever. And you'd be very foolish to change that. It was an interesting meeting. I think people were angry and they were frustrated. And I think they were angry and they were frustrated because of the way this process was carried out. And I think you bear some responsibility for that. We don't have a bunch of, you know, bad junior high kids in Fairfax. I find people who are very intelligent, and I don't think anybody wanted to act up. They were frustrated. They were frustrated because they hadn't been heard. Now, I've heard a couple of comments about representation, only 150 people at the meeting, and only 50 people, whatever, participate on the online Fairfax Nextdoor website. Well, you want to do something, have a vote, okay? That way, everybody will have an opportunity to speak his or her mind. The other point that I would make is that the meetings are not open only to people who are against things that are being proposed, are they? I mean, people who are pro are free to come to the meetings also. So I think the comments that come from the audience reflect the con versus pro mix. Same could have been said for the Planning and Building Committee meeting, where just about everybody who got up to speak was very much opposed to bringing the rezoning before the town council yet. It was brought before the town council. Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Next. Good evening.
Hi. Hi, I'm Roberta Anthies from Snowden. Thank you for hearing us tonight, and also thank you for the workshop. I got home from the workshop and, you know, my head was totally spinning. I was really kind of shocked, and I didn't know if it was a good shock or a bad shock, and I'm from New Jersey, you know, the land of the sopranos, where, you know, if you don't like the governor, they shut the bridge down. But I really feel that we have a lot of good democracy here, and I'm glad that we had the forum that we had, as hard as it was to have it. And I went home and I tried to think about exactly what did happen. You know, why did it happen? And to just bear down into the core of it, for me, what I think happened was that we needed greater and more representative input much earlier in the process. And if that had happened, I think people wouldn't have necessarily felt blindsided. And I heard Renee say something about, like, a snail mailing for the entire town would cost about $3,000. Is that approximately right, give or take? And I know it sounds like a lot of money to spend, you know, just to get a notice out, but in the end, it might have saved us, maybe it would have saved us a lot of money, and it might have saved us a lot of anguish. I can propose some wording for the message, but it would be bad wording since I'm from New Jersey. You know, something like, get your ass to this really crucial meeting, because I think people need to have a mailing that really, that everybody's going to get, not online, you know, not on a website or anything like that, but something that comes in the mail that's big and garish and loud that says, you know, get to this meeting. It's incredibly important. And I know you had expressed that you had some doubts about some of the aspects of the Town Center element early on in the process. And I think, once you then spent money on preparing a presentation for that and studying it, people began then to feel that maybe this was sort of, you were promoting an agenda that was formed by the few. That wasn't your intent, and I, you know, and I believe when you say that, but that's what might have come across. And a lot of that money maybe could have been saved had you gotten more input from more of us earlier on, and that really just meant that we had to know about it earlier and more clearly. So snail mailing is my solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next.
Hi, Denise Larson again on Scenic Road. Several people have said things that I also agree with, so I just, as one of those 15 people on the thread, I just kind of, that kind of bothered me. I felt like someone went through and go, oh, it's just this person, this one. I felt like I'm going to list now, and I've got to come to the Planning Commission at some point for my retaining wall and a deck, and I'm thinking, oh, someone might be voting against me. I don't know. But that, it just felt kind of condescending. I don't think 35 people that showed up at the meeting in 2004 is necessarily democracy or well-represented. I'm glad people got together and came up with a plan, but a democratic process involves the citizens at large knowing what's going on and having a say in it. I was very glad we did the workshop. I think people needed to vent. I certainly don't appreciate people just yelling out. That's kind of not my style, but I thought it was really important. As others have said, there was a lot of pent-up frustration, concern, and people needed to speak their piece. And I don't think there, it was, just to clarify, I don't think there's a lot of confusion that you were suddenly going to close Belinus Road and not do anything about the LC Bank connection. I don't think anyone thought that. Even if that goes in, and I think there's some positives to getting rid of the whole mess of the clause Broadway-Belinus debacle that got created, I'm open to some of those other things, but I don't think anyone thought that at all. Lastly, too, I just, I'm concerned about the whole transit-oriented development. I know several people have that bent or that belief system. I think it works in large urban areas where there are things like light rail, at least a train, something. That's not what we are here. And also, they need to be moving people, successful ones need to be moving people to one main work center. That's not what we have here. I think the whole cars bad, pedestrians, cyclists, good energy also creates kind of an us versus them. Most of us do need to drive for whatever reasons. This has always been that kind of place, except back when these cabins were first put up in the hills, but it's changed many, many decades ago. And lastly, and I know, it's not to offend anyone, because I know Streets for People is dear and dear to some folks' hearts, but streets are not for people. Even in the old Wild West, you know, a bench, I think they were great, when back when there maybe had cobblestone streets with a donkey and a cart, and everyone mingled. Even the Wild West, they had wooden sidewalks, because it got to the point of wagons and carriages and horses going by. I think they should be in the park. I think it's disrespectful to the residents in the other areas when it's closed. I'm not for closing once a month or every other Sunday or something, which I know is still sort of on the books for some people's dreams. Please have things in the park and make sure that the folks on the side streets are not constantly impacted by traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Hello again.
Hello. Janusz Kowdzieczyk. So I wanted to give you my experience of the meetings. What I saw was a very good example of social engineering. At the beginning of the meeting, people clearly showed that they don't want these changes. They were allowed to vent out their frustration, and later, they were maneuvered into creating so-called community plans that vast majority doesn't want. All I really heard was that people want the sidewalks fixed. Finally, I would like to tell you why I think people are suspicious of meetings like this. We had experienced times when officials had meetings and claiming that they were only exploring ideas or seeking community inputs, but at the same time, the deal was already done. Luckily, I haven't experienced this with this town council. But to give you an example, in April, Supervisor Rice held a meeting, community meeting, discussing building detention basins. At this meeting, she said that there will be no detention basins without community approval. The vast majority opposed. Five months later, Sunnyside had been acquired for the detention basin. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Larry.
Hi. Larry Bragman, 30 Hickory Road. And I think the meeting on Saturday, which I missed, was what they used to call spirited meeting. That was the euphemism that was used when I started in 2003. So, you know, I mean, whatever you can say about whether it was a good idea, bad idea, you know, people love Fairfax, people are involved here, and that's why it's a great town. I mean, we always make better decisions when we listen to people, and that's the lesson. And, you know, you learn and you go on, but you know, the main thing is to learn to listen and to be discerning, and that's what your job is. But on a more mundane level, just as far as the Belinus Fairfax, Belinus and Broadway situation is concerned, I think there's a really inexpensive way to help the traffic flow down there, which is simply to take out the parking on the northwest corner of Belinus and Broadway, right across from the Coffee Roasters, right next to the parcade. It's supposed to be limited parking. It's never ticketed, never, including during rush hour traffic. So the right lane, when you're going west on Broadway, is always backed up. And why is that? Because people are parking on the curb across from Coffee Roasters. And these are two parking spaces that if we took it out, you would create a flow that would go all the way to Claus. I mean, we can experiment closing the road down. Let's get a bucket of paint and paint the curb for a few weeks and see how it works. I mean, and the other thing is, if you get, if you get pushback from some of the delivery, like, let's say, the pizza place, they want their driver to be there, maybe you give them up a parking pass of some sort. I mean, it's just a much sort of low-key approach to improving what undoubtedly is a bad traffic flow situation down there without, you know, reorienting the town. So please, please. I would just ask that we really, like, send it to the Traffic Safety Committee, have them take a look at it. Jim's, you know, been very cooperative as far as like, you know, let's try, let's try this idea. And, you know, from many, many years of commuting into Fairfax and commuting out of Fairfax, you know, I mean, I've seen it, and I'm pretty sure if we do it, it's going to work. So keep up your good work. Try to, you know, get past the one, the parts that aren't so good. And, you know, we're still a town, and we still have to work together, so thank you very much.
Hi, Frank.
If I may, I think that is a good idea, Larry, what you suggest, and I think we should try that.
So I've definitely requested that to happen, and we've had some major issues with businesses, and we will continue to pursue that, so thank you very much.
Well, maybe we could discuss it at our next meeting.
As have I.
We will.
It's been on the table.
Yeah.
Frank Agar again, Meadowway. Now, I've seen two accidents down there because of cars parked illegally in those two spaces, blocking traffic. So, I mean, it's almost like a no-brainer, but anyway, I'm sure you're going to take a look at it. Thank you. You know, unfortunately, I had to work all weekend and could not attend a Saturday forum. So when I came on the town council in 1966, the Fairfax-Belinus Road was a designated federal secondary roadway. The town received a federal grant to replace sidewalks on Belinus Road, narrow them, they were about a foot and a half or almost two feet wider on each side. The federal grant narrowed them to make the roadway wider, so it met federal standards. At one time, it was considered an evacuation route. It's one of the few north-south routes in the whole county. And so we actually ended up having to accept this grant and narrowed the sidewalks there on Belinus. Fairfax had a design review board at one time, and when we put those new sidewalks in, the design review board said, you know, we should have exposed aggregate or washed concrete down there. And so that's what we did, and the town put sidewalks in. The town should be replacing those downtown sidewalks, as we put them in originally. I noticed that there's one of the newer businesses that did some remodeling down there, has put some new sidewalks in. They're shiny concrete. I don't know, you know, I guess if we still had a design review board, those would have been exposed aggregate or washed.
We still have a design review board. It's part of the Planning Commission, Frank.
Okay. But I mean, you know, those concrete sidewalks just stand out like a sore thumb. Half of the population lives on this side of Broadway and Town Hall. Belinus is their main access. In 1968, we looked at a Belinus bypass. We had a consultant prepare plans, and we looked at a Belinus bypass. We looked at running a road out of LC Bank and to Sir Francis Drake, and we concluded that it would not work. Golden Gate Transit said they couldn't get their buses around that turn if that's what we did. So that's one of the reasons we put that clause intersection in. You know, our merchants are always struggling on Belinus Road, and that proposal would have put some of them out of business. I don't believe we can make Belinus Road a closed roadway or even a one-way roadway without federal approval. I believe it's still a federal secondary roadway. The Belinus Road proposal should have been vetted with our own police department, our Ross Valley Fire Department, county fire, who's got to run fire equipment up, the fires up on the mountain, and a Marin Municipal Water District, who runs tanker trucks up. They would have told you that they can't get those tank, the large trucks, in and out of a bank connection with Sir Francis Drake, and then come around to LC and make the right turn on LC to go up Belinus Road. If we'd have just vetted it with our own public safety departments, we sure would have saved a lot of grief here. And when the folks on Domingo rose up in arms, they were right. I mean, when we looked at it, we said, no, we can't. And we looked at it, '68, how long ago was that? Long time ago. And folks on Domingo said, are you crazy? What are you doing? And we said, you're right. We're not going to, we're not going to mess with it. We're not going to adversely impact Belinus Road.
Frank, can you finish up, please?
So, let me quickly say, yeah, many downtown properties are for sale and are changing hands. right now, as we speak. And we're in danger of losing a village character that brought so many of us here in the first place. Fairfax is the last of the old incorporated Marin towns, and it deserves maximum protection. Folks love Fairfax the way it is, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is that, that's all for public comment? Okay, thank you all very much. Bringing it back up here, does anyone have anything to say?
Well, I, I've, for quite a while, thought that the town center element was, in a way, kind of a mistake. I think what we should have done, and what I think we have the opportunity to do now, is, is pull out a couple of pieces that look really valuable and work on those. And it's, it's not that people weren't well-intentioned, I don't mean to imply that. I just think it conveys this idea of wholesale changes or very large changes. And I think what I heard on Saturday was, there are a few things that really jump out that are worthwhile. We talked about sidewalks, the Parkade. Matt Tacker, who I actually was one of the people supportive of, and still am, pulled out some really important things in his supplement, which, other things that should probably be off the table. And maybe we just pull out a few of those and do something reasonable that we can actually work on, rather than trying to do something broad. But if it's the will of the council, then we can go forward and look at things holistically with just certain pieces that maybe are the focus. But I will say, as far as the communication effort in getting the word out, clearly there was a misstep. But I have done a mailing to the entire town, and it's a lot more than $3,000. It's more on the order of $8,000 with printing materials and mailing. And I don't think anybody here is really supportive of spending $8,000 on snail mail. I think, maybe not, I could be wrong, but I will say that one of the things I, occurred to me, because there was a gentleman sitting next to me who talked a lot about, there's, we could have had more people here. I think we had a lot of people on a Saturday from nine to one, but that's not to say that we missed some people. So one of the thoughts I had is, why don't we do things like put posters around town? We did the banner. You could probably put more on a poster about what it's about. And so we could do something like that. There's probably other creative approaches that would not cost us a lot of money, but would get the word out to a broader audience. But I do think the Town Center Forum that's online is really helpful, as well as using more Nextdoor to just get the announcements out. And I think maybe one of the things we need to do is pay a little more attention to the wording we use. Words have tremendous power. I don't need a clapping. You know, we're all here just trying to do the best for our community and trying to represent you all, but I appreciate it, is just, let's think more about that. I know sometimes on our public notices, they're very legalese, we could still have two sentences that make it simple what it's about, because sometimes even I'm not sure what those things mean. Yeah, I mean, honestly, I got one in Canyon Village for something, and I thought, oh my God, we're going to be talking about the senior housing project. Only at the very end, I saw something that said, methodology for traffic study, which I actually understand what those words are, but I had to communicate to a lot of my neighbors on that. So I think we could do a little better job there. I want to just thank the staff for trying hard. And I think because there was some animosity in the beginning, doesn't mean that it was a failed meeting. I think by taking public comment, and those folks who stayed through public comment, we got to hear a lot, the people who put post-its down, we took that information, the people that stayed, not everybody needed to stay. So I think a lot came out of that Saturday, and it's unfortunate that there was some shouting and such, but sometimes that's needed to get to a certain point where people start listening. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? David.
All right, Mike. I think you've raised some good points. I received a thoughtful email over the weekend, and I responded with the following thought, which I've spoken about at council before, and I don't mean to raise anybody's hackles or get you mad, but democracy is a reciprocal obligation. Our job is to give you the maximum amount of information that we can, and to be as transparent and forthcoming as absolutely possible, to bend over backwards and think about it until we get that exactly right and hit that right note. However, the community has an obligation, and I see it as a very simple one. Once a month, open up your email, go online, look at our website, and read the darn thing. It's pretty good, could always be better, but it includes most of the information, if not all, the information that you need. And that's not a big burden. And if you have any questions, I'm going to go out on a limb and think that probably most folks in this town know one of us. We've been at your door, we've pestered you, we're asking you for this or for that, we're walking your neighborhoods, we shop in the, you know us. If you have a question, send us an email, call us up. Heaven knows, over the last gazillion years, I've responded to a lot of inquiries. I welcome every one of them, and I try to respond to them as quickly as possible, and certainly try to get it done within 24 hours. But it's not a one-way street here. It's not, we're going to have to knock on your door every single time to tell you every single thing. We need you to use the tools that are commonly available to avail yourself of the information. And if you're, if we haven't done the best job, or you're a little confused, as Barbara's suggesting with some oddly-worded document, give us a call. We're happy to talk to you. And I mean this absolutely sincerely. Thanks.
Next, John.
Okay.
Okay.
Good point, David. I mean, it takes an involved community, and who knows? Maybe it takes a bunch of red herrings out on Nextdoor to get people mad enough to come down and pay attention, but I really don't think so. Or I hope not, because it doesn't say good things. I mean, I think people really care about Fairfax, and that's why we saw so many people waiting into Nextdoor, where there's 650 comments, all talking back and forth about something that's really not on the table, like four-story apartment buildings or, I mean, I, I kind of want to jump in and talk about it, except one of the problems is, is if we get into a very involved comment back and forth on Nextdoor, there's a problem legally with us having made our mind up for a certain position that then disqualifies our decision-making process up here. So, I mean, am I right? The town lawyer's nodding yes. I mean, this is one of the things, I guess I spoke to this a couple of meetings ago, when I tried to say, well, you know, we're reading this stuff, and we hear what people are talking about, but we can't go back and answer every comment. We really, we do listen to what you're saying, and if you don't get feedback right away, that means something. But anyway, what I want to be talking about is not that so much, even though it needs it, but the town center element. I think that a lot of the things that you brought up, Barbara, as, you know, the things that we, you know, need to pick out of the downtown element, that is what the downtown element is about. There are some very real things there that affect everybody in the community, and we all use the downtown. We all hope that it could work a little better, and like a whole lot of the quirkiness of it. Yeah, we definitely don't like the sidewalks and cracks in them and stuff, and, you know, they get dirty and cracked, and it's a problem. They're way narrow, I'm sorry to hear that the federal government sponsored that. You know, but there's some real problems downtown. One of the problems was, our circulation downtown worked great when there was a four-way stop sign at the corner where the light is on Claus and Drake, because there's stop signs around the rest of downtown. And it all, it worked very badly for the traffic trying to get through on Sir Francis Drake, which is the reason why there's a traffic light there now. But now, when the traffic light is green, and everybody knows this, everything, when it's green for traffic on Drake, everything else is stopped and clogged up. And as soon as the light changes, everybody has to run the stop signs to get through Drake. And if you're a pedestrian, you better know that, because you might get run over. That's not a good situation, and that is something that personally I would like to see fixed. One of the things that came up at the workshop, and I was curious to hear what the consultant had to say about it, was, what about a roundabout there that's always moving very slowly? I mean, I think roundabouts can take a lot of different configurations, and, you know, they're always moving. They're 35% more efficient than a traffic light. In other words, 35% more cars are getting through on Drake. What's more, if they're always moving at whatever it is, 12 or 15 miles an hour, it's going to interface with our stop signs a lot better. Whether there's enough space to have one there with all the different roads coming all different directions, I don't know. I mean, the traffic consultant was like, well, I don't know if the angles can allow that to happen or not, but I'd really like to see if we could make that work, because it would be something that would help our town, help people move around, you know, and turn us less of, into less of a parking lot and more of a downtown that works for our community. Parkade functionality is really important. We've got a grant still on the table, $300,000, for addressing a lot of the ADA issues, pedestrians' circulation stuff, to, just to make the parkade more functional, to deal with some of the things. Larry Bragman got that grant for us when he was on this council, and it's still there. I pulled it back a couple of times from it being moved to other communities. Let me see, I like the red paint idea, too. It's a quick fix, we can do it tomorrow. I would also like to explore, just the communication, that's one lesson that I've hear pretty loud, is that the communication needs to be fixed. I mean, right now, there's a lot of people talking to each other and basing their conversation on sometimes things that are erroneous information. If we can try to deal with the fact, you know, deal with some correct information that gets put out, for instance, on Nextdoor, or posters downtown is good, too. I mean, I like using the new media, but I also like press releases that go out to newspapers, because people read newspapers, too, and there's a different cross-section of the community that reads newspapers. But if there was information that came from the town onto Nextdoor, and it wasn't one of us saying, well, this is what I think, and here's, you know, the problems with that argument, and back and forth, which, you know, gets the, into Brown Act violations and different things that we can't go to legally, we need to solve that problem and get around the Brown Act. One of the, the open time people said that the Brown Act is really designed to promote conversation and communication around democracy and not have backroom deals. And for that reason, I think the Brown Act is very good. And I think open time is closed right now, so you kind of have to hang on. But we need to figure out a different way to get information out to people accurately so that a whole firestorm doesn't build around something that's not true. And so that's about what I've got. I think, yes, snail mail is expensive. It costs the $3,000 in postage, and then people throw it out and they're recycling. It's inefficient. It's nice to have, but it's so expensive. Anyway, that's about my rant.
Thank you, John. Peter.
Thank you. Well, it is a process, and it has been an ongoing process, and it's slow, and I think we're actually kind of to the point where we're getting, hopefully, we're at a good point where we can get more organized input from the community of what the community wants. And I think Saturday's workshop was a good start, and I think the best value of the workshop was, once things settle down, we, people really only had about an hour to, working in small groups, kind of set forth ideas to be considered that might improve downtown. And that was very productive, a lot of really good ideas, and we're in the process of kind of collating those and bringing those together. I think we would benefit from a little more input like that, and hopefully it can be done, you know, without the ranker, and to allow more participation and more input from people. And once we have that information and input, then I think we can step back a little bit and consider, okay, these are the ideas that have a lot of support, you know, do we want to go forward with them? And then a further process would need to happen. And then sort of the engineering process would have to happen before anything could be implemented, things like traffic studies and so forth, seeing the feasibility. So at this point, I think we're at a place where we're still getting the information. I would like to continue that, have another workshop. I think there's a lot of information still to be called and wisdom from the community to help inform us. And then I think we need a process of sharing that with the community in a, kind of a cohesive way, which can also be developed. The use of the consultants, I think the materials presented by Matt Tacker and his group were very useful in terms of sort of putting tools into people's hands that people could actually express their ideas. The facilitation of the workshop didn't, really didn't pan out in terms of using those consultants, I think. Our thinking in using outside consultants was, at the prior workshop, when staff was operating, was running the workshop, there was a sense that it might be good to bring in people from outside the community that could be a little, a little more neutral. But maybe we should go back to, you know, the council and the staff primarily running the workshop. But I do think we did benefit from the materials presented by Matt Tacker's group in terms of tools for people to give input. And again, if we, at our next workshop, I think it would be good to do it at a larger venue. I think we should invest in all of the notice and communication suggestions that people have suggested. I think a modest, it might be worth spending the money on mailing something out to everyone in town, maybe just a modest letter, may not be, you know, the slickest, expensive mailer. But it may warrant spending that money to involve as many people as possible. So I would like to see the process go forward, again, to get more input from people, and so we can all be a little better informed about what the sense of the community is going forward. And, you know, ultimately... And, you know, ultimately, we may decide to do rather modest changes, but I think we should look at what, what the community really is willing to consider. We do have some circulation problems, I think, that could be improved. It's complicated, and I think that's where the collective wisdom of the community is very valuable, but also then backed up with some careful technical analysis of what can be, what's feasible from an engineering standpoint. So, yeah, and in some, I think the workshop was tumultuous, but it was very productive and, I think, very positive on the whole. So, thank you.
So I just, I'm not gonna talk and talk, but I just wanted to respond to the consultant issue, just from, you know, I'm not up here defending things, I just, for information's sake. You're looking at our town staff, pretty much. We've got another senior planner and administrative, what's Susan's role? What's the name of her administrative assistant? And they all have very specific assigned roles and expertise, and many of them are playing multiple roles. So when we have a consultant come in, it takes the place of hiring more staff. When you hire more staff, there's a lot that comes along with that, and that is benefits and pensions and all the things that come with staff. So we do do, we do hire consultants for things. One, that are not in the areas of expertise of these overworked people, but also because it saves us money in the long run. And there's lots of ways that we can argue that back and forth, but that is part of it. And we've mentioned up here, well, we'd have the traffic engineer study it, so that's a consultant. Then we'd have, you know, we have these people that have to come in in order to inform us and move us along the right path. So we may need to agree to disagree about that, but that is how we make the best use of our budget and our, our need for expertise in those areas. I also want to say that communications, Lynn Walsh, who participated, is the communications, sort of administrative assistant to the city manager in Mill Valley. And they put out a newsletter called Mill Valley Connect. They have four staff people right now that work part-time to, mostly part-time, on communications. I mean, that's as much staff as we pretty much have. They do a fabulous job. She's sat with me. We've had great conversations. She's given us ideas. She's given me templates. She's talked about the, you know, they've studied it very, very deeply. What, what, what do people look at? What do people see? Do they see signs? Do they open their mail? How much of a, how many people recycle it right away? That kind of thing. So Garrett and I will be meeting with Lynn to get some of this and pick their brains, all the work and research they've done, to make that effective and move forward with that information. Having said that, I very much think that one of the best ways we get communication out there, not necessarily online, because it's so easy to get misinformation. When you can't look at that person and say, wait, what did you really mean? Or, wait, I have a question about that. You end up with sometimes quite a wildfire that goes on, and I'm, that just is, to me, the fact. I have two teenagers. I see how that happens. It can be very dangerous when you're dealing with teenagers. And I'm feeling as though it can be very dangerous when you're dealing with adults sometimes. Having said that, I do believe that when you sit with a group of people like neighbors, and so take Nextdoor offline as a suggestion, and say, hey, I'm gonna get my neighbors together and we're gonna sit down, we're gonna have and figure out what it is this neighborhood needs, what's gonna work for Dominga. Dominga has done this very well. Lynn has been leading that. Her proposal is that we come up with something that she's now calling the TCAC, which is the Town Center Advisory Committee. I don't believe that we need a GPIC anymore because that's General Plan Implementation Committee, and that doesn't really, to me, make sense anymore. So I would propose, and this is at the very beginnings of starting to learn about how we can do this in an efficient way that doesn't end up costing staff far more time and the town far more money to make something like this work and work well. But those are the directions that I'm looking in. I really believe that we have a lot to study. There were only 38 responses that said that we should do nothing. So that means to me that people think that there is something to do, whether it be, yeah, I really don't like Klaus. It's a real disaster, actually, out at Klaus, and it's not gonna get any better unless we do something. So I agree with this idea that we take parts of it, but I do think that this idea of thinking that any plan is a bad thing is not looking at the fact that these parts, they, they all intersect, just as parking intersects, just as what are the uses of downtown. And that's why things have gotten so big that it's very hard to decipher and to take things and look at them individually. And, yeah, I mean, we're all experiencing that. So I propose that we continue with the process in that we have Matt Tacker, who will come back with a full compilation of all of the things that came out of that one hour of the workshop, which I'm glad we got that, and I'm glad for the way we got to that. But we now have an opportunity to take a lot of amazing ideas, because people who said they didn't want anything came up with some excellent ideas. So let's look at that. Let's bring it back. Let's look at where the priorities are. Let's say, hey, you know, wait, these four things rose up really high in the list of priorities from this community, both forum and workshop, and see what we can afford to, to do. And that's what I would propose, and we can talk about whether we want to have town facilitate it and how we wanna use the money going forward. But Matt's planning as a, as a facilitator for this process is vital for us to get to the next step, to make sense of those maps, to make sure that we've captured everybody's input, and I know we will, because I thought that worked incredibly well in the end. So anyway, thank you for staying, for the input, for, for really caring as much as you do, and I really, we are committed to working together here. As I said, the good news about this is we have no mandates. No one from the state is telling us we have to do this to our town center. And yet, I think everybody's been very clear, given the results, that there are a lot of cool things we can do, and I think we can do them. I really do. And I, I, I hope that you will trust that we can do it together. Okay. Thank you. I think we're ready to take a break.
And, but before we do that, could we look at the agenda after the 10 o'clock hour? And can I strongly suggest, although...
I, there is someone waiting here who's waited the whole evening for the next item that we pushed back.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. Number 17, I know Mike Viret's gonna flip when I say this, but 17 and 20, these are very important matters, and to take them up at this late hour, we've been meeting for five hours, these are really essential things.
Garrett, what's his name?
I asked the financial advisor to come to the meeting, so he's here now.
But Garrett, I get that, but, I mean, the, these, if we're gonna talk about the actual ideas of what, if, if, if this is a limited discussion about whether to do it, well, that's a short conversation. If it's a conversation about whether to do it and what to do with the money that we might, then that's a longer conversation.
That is a longer conversation. I think what we're looking for is direction of, do you want to do it?
Okay. Okay. Well, with that, I withdraw my objection.
So, so if we could, since we said we would revisit the number 13 and number 10, we have someone here for number...
17.
17?
Yes.
10 and for, I hear 10. Just one moment, please.
That's Lansdale.
Lansdale's 10? Yes. Okay. So can we go back to, can we go to 10 right now?
Yes, but we have to decide because it's 10 o'clock. So can I suggest, then, that we take 18, 19, and 20 and kick them?
Garrett, is there anything in there that needs, we can, we can push back the zero waste goals, indoor/outdoor air, we can do that in November, and the short-term rentals we can push. So let's do 10, 13, 17. Is that okay?
Can we do 17 before 13?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. Thank you for being here so long. So let's go ahead with the staff report for number 10.
So 10 is approval of the Lansdale Joint Traffic Calming Project with the town of San Anselmo. I think everyone knows Lansdale is pretty heavily used by residents walking or biking or driving. It's also heavily used by pedestrians and bicyclists to get from San Anselmo to Fairfax, and there really isn't any sidewalk or bike lane to talk about. So, because of that, residents of both areas, because Lansdale goes across San Anselmo, San Anselmo and Fairfax, at a meeting sponsored by the Marin County Bicycle Coalition, fight its staff, and the council actually has a subcommittee to deal with these neighborhood concerns to a couple of community meetings. We had them over the past two months, and actually, we talked about long-term and short-term type of solutions. And now we've arrived to the point to where, after a couple of community meetings, we reached consensus for how to move forward and it be incremental approach. And the incremental approach that we're discussing is signage. Well, first of all, education, public outreach, so we said we'd do that. Then the other is signage of these Wolfenov signs that are big in Europe, and it kind of talks about this is kind of a common area for people to interact and kind of slow down and be aware there's other things going on, bicyclists, people playing the street, whatever. And then the other thing is, we talked about, we would pretty much, in essence, paint the intersections, five of them. One on the entrance to Lansdale on San Anselmo, one on the side of Fairfax, and then the three intersections on Lansdale. And in essence, this would look, it'd be probably red, a brick pattern. And the thought pattern is, what that does is a visual cue for bicyclists and drivers to slow down. It's just paint. It looks like it's raised, but it's not, and it's the whole idea that it's slowed down.
But it does have a texture.
It has a texture.
It's not that it's undetectable, just like, it's just, it's not just visual.
No, but, but, sure, a bicyclist going over is gonna feel a car. I don't know if a car's really gonna feel it, maybe, but I, I think it, it has a texture. It's not really thick or anything, but sure. There, there's some, you could probably feel it in some form or fashion. So what the issue is, San Anselmo actually approved this at their meeting Tuesday or last week? Maybe it was two, last Tuesday.
Tuesday last week.
Tuesday last week. And so what we thought, the council subcommittee thought it'd be good, this is a good example of, one, kind of cooperation between the cities, because we would split the costs, and actually San Anselmo would take the lead and do everything, so actually, they're incurring staff time, which is great from staff's perspective to do this. And two, it's actually something where the neighborhood got together. They came up with something that's a more of an incremental approach, set of speed tables and so on, and think it's a good thing to try. Seems like a good thing from staff's perspective. Obviously, we didn't budget it per se, and it just seemed like something maybe the council should talk about, but you do have your representatives of the mayor and the vice mayor on your liaison to the neighborhoods when these issues come up, and they're also recommending this would be a good thing to do. It's about $12,500. We can actually charge it to our street resurfacing and repair. I think Councilmember Kohler had indicated this would have been a good thing for Measure J funds, and actually, what we could do in part of the mid-year budget adjustments just indicate that it's actually funded out of Measure J. But with that, that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. Barbara, you had wanted to pull that.
So since I pulled it, I, I just want to say, I think it's a very wonderful project. And I bike on Lansdale Station. I'm one of the few people who stops. I see plenty of people passing me on their bikes happily going through those stop signs. And so I think it's a laudable project. There's two pieces to this. One is, I think one of the things we really need to do is start thinking about what we're charging things to. Two years ago, I worked really diligently with, at that time, Councilmember Bragman's wife, Holly Bragman, to lead up the campaign for Measure J. And I think some of, and some of you know that Measure J will be up in two years. I think we ought to be really thinking carefully about what are we charging things to so we can say, Measure J dollars at work. But I want to also preface that by saying two other things, is that we're in the process of working on Measure C. Some of you know I'm leading up that campaign. It's been a ton of work, and you hear people questioning, why are we doing Measure C? Well, just to think about Measure C, and I'm not, I'm not talking about campaign stuff. I just want to talk about what the council decided, is we decided we needed the money to make our basic nut or whatever. But then I pushed to make it more, a quarter cent more, so we could do some of these extra projects. And so if Measure C doesn't pass, we have a pretty big hole to fill. And so my concern is the timing, is that, I think this is a laudable project. I like the cooperation with, with the people in that area. I think it's great that we're working with San Anselmo and that they'll use their staff. All of this is great, but I'm very concerned about us acting as if even $12,500, you know, that comes from somewhere. So my preference would have been that this was proposed after we hear about Measure C, because I think that extra $225,000, should it pass, some of these special projects would fit nicely into that. You know, they're capital, so they work. But because I don't want to stand in the way of this project, I very strongly want to say we should definitely use Measure J money for this, because I'd like to be able to tell people with a straight face, this is your Measure J dollars at work. I think we need to do more of that. And very recently, a reporter contacted Garrett and then me and wanted to know, what did you do with Measure D? We want to see a picture of that. And my picture was Manzanita Road, but they wanted something happening today. Well, it's not like we constantly have capital projects and dirt moving. But, so let's start thinking this way. There was a project a few months ago that I pushed again for Measure J, and I backed off because it would require changing the budget, but I'm not gonna back off on this. And the one thing I will also add, that I don't think we can fix it with this project, but as far as Lansdale Station, because there's that dip with the dirt and the grass, a lot of kids do mountain biking. And my neighbor about six years ago was hit by a kid doing that, flipping around. She had permanent shoulder injury. She had to pay for it out of her own pocket to have surgery. The parent that she went to said, too bad. So I think one of the things in the future, should Measure C pass, once we do, and I'm, I'm feeling like everybody's supportive of this project, as I am, is maybe another step would be to look at, is there something we can do to limit? I mean, I don't know. You can't limit kids from doing what they want to do. It looks fun to me, too.
Can I actually?
Yeah.
If I may. So that, as Garrett mentioned in the staff report, this is phase one. So the next phase, which is a more actually significant substantive treatment, is to deal with that ditch. So on our side, the pipe is buried, so we have ground and then you can put parking there. But on the San Anselmo side, it's just a ditch, and they need to deal with drainage. So that is more money. But Sean Condry, who we're working with, who's Public Works Director in San Anselmo, is going to take that as the next step, so that actually we could do some, some serious traffic calming and, you know, make some things that are a little more significant than the painting and the intersection calming. So yes, that would be gone, then. I know exactly what you're talking about. It scares me to death.
Yeah, I think that would be great, because it happens a lot, and when I ride my bike down Lansdale Station all the time, I'm always looking for those kids.
Well, and also, they go down there, and then I've seen them jump into center.
Yeah, they're flipping. So if we could, that would be great. But again, I would like all of the council members to think, we all have projects that we would very much like to do that might be $10,000 here, $12,000 here, but we have to be very cautious, because let's think very carefully that if Measure C doesn't pass, we're gonna have a huge hole.
Okay. Any other council members? John?
Sure. Um, yeah, that ditch is all on San Anselmo's side, and they have a plan to deal with it. It also deals with a lot of parking issues, too. Um, one of the other things that came up at the, uh, the mayor and I both went and spoke at the San Anselmo, uh, parking, uh, meeting, where they also approved this. Uh, one of the things that they brought up is this Wunneuf sign. Has a picture of a car, and it has a picture of a bike and a ball, and somebody walking.
No bike.
No, no, sorry. Uh, it doesn't have a picture of a bike, but it has a picture of a kid playing ball and all this stuff. And one of the, um, things that that council suggested was that this sign include a picture of a bike, so bikes feel like, oh, okay, they're talking to me. You know, I need to slow down, there's kids in the street. Um, I thought that was a good idea. I thought I'd put that out there, as long as we, this is pulled off of consent. Um, if we have support for that idea here, then we will have consensus with the San Anselmo council also.
So, is there some ability to change the Wunneuf?
Well, Sean says that he would work on that.
Yeah, he's gonna work on that, but if we gave some affirmative noise that way, he will feel supported from this council also.
Well, no, actually, I, I should not have let this go, because we have two members in the public that waited to speak.
Public to speak, and I also want to speak to your suggestion, Barbara, that we do this with Measure J money, and I think that's a good idea. Um, and also, for full explanation, because I saw the look on David's face when they're talking about the texture of this, they actually heat up the asphalt and stamp a texture into it. So, it is something that vibrates a bicycle as you go through the intersection.
Okay. Peter, are we okay to go out to public?
Uh, quick question.
Okay.
Uh, a quick comment on the sign, too. Uh, maybe it's a European thing, but it looks like they're having a soccer match in the middle of the street. Uh, I, I, I'm not down with this, uh, design. Hopefully, it could be tweaked, and, um, but, I, I mean, I'm not gonna micromanage a sign, but I think it's a good idea, uh, to, um, have the bicycle thing, too. And, um, I just think that the sign design's a little goofy. But I have a question about the funding. Is there any chance that, um, any kind of funding from, say, TAM could be available? Um, or is that just?
That's, yeah, they don't have a call for projects at this point. I mean, the, the timeline on this is pretty quick, and yes, they do have $25,000 grants periodically, um, but not right now.
And when, when would their funding cycle open up? It'd be like?
A year from now. I mean, you'd kinda stop this project in its tracks if you waited for that.
Okay.
Okay, can we go out? Did you guys wanna make any comment?
No, we just want you to pass.
But it's been an interesting evening, right? Kate, would you like to speak?
So first, I would like to thank the council and the staff members for your dedication to the town of Fairfax and the democratic process, and also for your endurance. Um, I, uh, am really enthusiastic about this process, um, and about this project. It was, I've lived on Lansdale for about three years. I've been very pregnant, or had a small child, or both during that entire time, and so it's sort of the most vulnerable I've felt. Um, Lansdale, as we've talked about, is very heavily traveled by pedestrians and bikes, and it's also the sidewalk, um, and cars are also an issue. And, um, this project, I think, is a great outcome of a community process. Um, I personally fired the street twice to invite everyone to the meeting, so I feel like everyone has been informed about it. Um, we had really great turnout at the meetings. Um, it wasn't unanimous, um, but I think that this is a really fantastic start, and there was definitely consensus around it. So, I am really excited about taking this step towards the traffic calming and being the first Wunneuf in, in the Ross Valley. And I ask for your support of this project.
Kate, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Your endurance.
Thank you so much for the, your support and work on this project.
Can we entertain a motion?
Can I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to approve the project with the stipulation that the money be, uh, charged to Measure J.
Second.
As clarification, that will show up in the mid-year budget adjustment, 'cause we just need to, it's, it's a budgetary issue, just moving stuff around so it shows properly.
Fine with me.
Okay, so we have a, um, a motion, a motion Kohler and, uh, and second Weinshof? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Thank you, ladies, for staying.
My husband wanted to say, we have 15, we held off, we had to let out the break.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for, for hanging in there. Alrighty. The, the sole survivor here. Um, we are moving on to, oh, to, uh, item number seventeen.
That seems to be the dress today for a majority of us.
Blusher.
There we go. Must be late, since we're talking about our attire. Okay, so maybe as a little background, let's continue from your September meeting. And at your May budget workshop, we did talk about, council talked about those options related to refinancing our unfunded liability, as well as possibly, uh, taking money out for capital improvements. Uh, one of the things what we did is, we kind of, we have something out there called the CalPERS side fund. And what that is, is that's the unfunded liability for pre-2007, and so that's what CalPERS refers to as the side fund. Then we have another pot that's called pre-UAL, unfunded accrued liability 2013, and that's the unfunded liability between 2007 and 2013. You add those together, and it's about 4.1 million dollars that we're currently making payments on. And so, really, what we did was, we talked to Mark Pressman, who's this town's municipal advisor, and then we talked to the finance committee, which consists of the mayor and vice mayor, and we talked about options to explore for financing, refinancing that debt, as well as perhaps taking money out for capital improvements. And so, we came up with two options. One is just refinancing the debt, and two is refinancing the deck and taking money out for capital improvements or some other things. So, before I turn it over to Mark, or I think Michael might wanna say something, really, the best way to think about it, and we have the staff report, is think about it like this. So, assume you have a mortgage, home mortgage, and assume the term is 20 years. What we're looking at is the same term, 20 years, but looking at refinancing at half your interest rate. So, if you had an interest rate of seven and a half percent, we're looking at going to something that's below 3.7. That seems like a no-brainer. Really, you could be saving a lot of money. And in the town's position, just refinancing our unfunded liability, those 4.1 million, we actually will save about 1.5, 1.4 million in interest. How that breaks out, first five years, you'll save about 100,000 in interest. One, the side fund, that first one I talked about, that's pre-2007, that actually gets paid off in year five. And what happens in year six, you don't make that principal payment anymore, and so your interest savings just accrues to the pre-2013 UAL. So, the best way to think about it is, you will save, the town will save money that you could use for other things the first five years. And in year six, you'll actually be saving about 240,000 in a principal payment that you could use for other things. And then you have your savings on interest. So, really, what we're looking for the kind of guidance on, and Mark can get into more details of what the mechanism is, is we're looking for guidance on, do you agree that refinancing the side fund and UAL makes perfect sense? And then the secondary question is, do you wanna take those savings and, in essence, monetize it, so you could take about 900,000 out for capital improvements?
And we make the second decision at a more reasonable hour, in which maybe one person from the town would be in the audience. The first question, yeah, great that Mr. Pressman, thank you for sitting through all of this, and we can discuss that. But the second part of it, I think you don't do at 11 o'clock, when nobody's here.
Sure. I, I think that's fair enough. I think the core question for the second part is, is if you decided you wanna take some level of money out, in your budget, you do have 250,000 of financing you're looking, going to look for, for current capital projects. And then ultimately, is what would you do with the balance of the funding? Um, more importantly, it should be noted that we're not asking you to decide what to do with that money. You would have to have a separate process to decide what to do. But I think that's fine. I think we're looking for, does it sound like a good idea for refinancing? And then you could, I suppose, put off, you could put off the discussion on if you want to take any money out.
Basically, other than, of course, compensating, um, our folks who move the money around and do the work, Mr. Pressman's firm, and some staff time, I imagine, um, there's no cost there. There's only a benefit, a 1.4 million dollar benefit.
Sure. Obviously, there are issuance costs, but yes.
But beyond the cost of reissuance and, and the mechanism costs, but beyond that, this is by doing that simple task, simple for us, challenging for you, um, or professional for you, we save 1.4 million dollars.
There's an offsetting, uh, cost, which is that CalPERS is gonna have to figure out how to get seven and a half percent on their investments, once we're not participating in that. Once we pay off our debt upfront, they're gonna have to figure out how to invest that 1.4 million dollars and make seven and a half percent in order to make their own projections. And I think, I think in a broader sense, if, if all cities were to do this, there might be a problem. I don't know.
So, and then, just a question, Mr. Pressman. So, what I don't see in the tables is what the issuance costs are, because this looks to me like 1.446 is total savings, but do we, you at least have a ballpark of what the issuance costs would be, so we would?
Excuse me. Though, those, um, those savings are net of the costs. Um, we have worked in the, um, the cost of issuance into the process, but I don't have that with me now.
So, okay, just because, I guess I don't speak your language. So, are you saying that you've already factored in the issuance costs, so when we look and see that the total savings is 1.446?
That's net.
Okay.
That would accrue to this town. So, there are costs of issuance, or costs of the transaction that are built into this, but what you're seeing is the net proceeds that would accrue to the town.
So, that's what we would see?
Yes.
1.4?
Yes.
Okay.
And we can come back to you.
That's what the assumptions of the interest rate actually being what we've projected here.
Correct. And, you know, that, that is the real variable here, is if interest rates move up, then your savings will come down.
And from what I understand, Janet Yellen is talking about changing interest rates, probably after the election. Um, so I think we would wanna give you direct, direction on refinancing pretty quickly.
I think that would be prudent.
And then, just one other question on this, and this is for Mike and Garrett, because I spent quite some time talking to you about our pension liability, and I appreciate that explanation. So, we also have the post-2013, which we don't really know what that amount is. I think we know at this point, it's around 4.7, is that right? I didn't look at my notes.
In looking at CalPERS report, I thought the current unfunded liability is more like under 4 million or 3 million.
I, I, if my memory serves, I think if you add it all.
This is the post-2013?
Yeah, if you add it all together, it's around 9 million plus.
Right.
So, here, you've got about 4.1, and so the balance would be the post.
Right, so that's what it was, about 4.7 when I met with them.
Right.
So, obviously, that's not here, but it does seem to me, I like David's idea about separating out the two decisions, the decision about whether or not to refinance, and I think it is kind of a no-brainer, the 1.4 savings is, is a good idea. If we can do that.
I, I think that is a correct assumption. Um, I will say, and I don't mean it to be self-serving, but, um, there are, if you wanna delay the decision about pulling money out, there are a couple of considerations. Um, one would be, your costs of issuance are gonna be duplicated, so you're gonna have a little bit more cost if you separate the transaction into two transactions. Uh, that's number one. Number two is, the interest rate is, the further out you delay the decision and the execution of, of pulling money out, that involves borrowing.
Wait.
If we pull the money out, when can we just put it into our bank account?
Can we just put, pull the money out and put it into our bank account? I'm, I'm concerned about the, what you were just saying about extra costs.
Well, y- you're gonna be borrowing.
Yes.
So, you're gonna borrow in order to pay off CalPERS.
Yes.
Okay? But then, if you want to pull money out, that's a different borrowing, okay? 'Cause you're monetizing the savings stream.
Yes.
Okay? So, there's two borrowings, one to pay off CalPERS, the other to fund the money that goes into your bank account.
Right.
So, if, if I'm reading you correctly, you're saying separate the two into two transactions or two decisions?
No. This first decision is to, um, ask you to go forward. The second decision is for us to decide what to do with the 1.4 million.
Okay, all right, okay.
But, okay, so there's two, just, right now, there's two decisions in front of us, and which you were separating. The second decision is whether or not to take money out. So, the 1.4 happens without taking money out. And the idea is, the second part of the decision is whether or not to take money out. And what Mark is pointing out is if we separate those two decisions, we're paying twice at least. And the longer we take on this, the more the interest rate may change. I guess, that makes sense to me not to, um, as far as deciding, should we take money out, what to do with the money, I see that as doing that a separate time, which I think Garrett already pointed out. But I guess my thoughts are this, saving 1.446, to me, is huge. And potentially, we have that money available to do projects with. When I look at the option two, which is taking money out, and after you pay down the, um, I forget what it was, 250,000, basically, you're left with, um, 650,000 to do something with, if you take money out. This is on the staff report, which may, you may or may not have. And I personally look at that as a couple of things.
Well, I, I don't know where the 600,000.
Well, so what?
Well, what we did was, we took the 900 rough estimate and subtracted 250 from it, 'cause we know we, we have needs of 250. And you get 650 remainder to spend on something.
I see, okay, okay. So, you'd take 900 out, but you'd be left with 600 after you do your immediate fixes.
So, so here's my thoughts on this, which are more directed to Garrett and Mike, is that I'm not an advocate of taking money out. We end up saving almost 1.5 million if we just refinance. By taking this bit of money out, we're also losing that savings, from what I can see. Maybe I'm not reading the charts right, because the chart on the back of option two shows that you're left with new money, net proceeds, 34,800. So, to me, to have 900,000 or 650,000, when, I kinda go back to my original mantra, which was, we fought hard for Measure J. That kind of money can be used for capital projects. We're in the middle of Measure C. You're, I'm hearing from people out there, what are you doing with our money? If, are we gonna be just awash in extra money to spend on these little projects? Um, I guess, I'm not an advocate of taking money out. I don't think it's enough, and I think we end up with net proceeds of so little, whereas if we just take money out, potentially, I'm not suggesting we spend all this, but potentially, we have about 1 point, almost 1.5 1 point, almost 1.5 million, that over time, we could look at trying to allocate those monies if we have big projects.
Can we see if anyone else has questions?
Yeah, I just, I, I disagree. It seems to me that when you take out a, to use Garrett's, extending Garrett's thing, from a mortgage to a second mortgage, you take out the second mortgage, and if you start paying the first mortgage with the second mortgage, you're not making a prudent financial decision. However, if you take the second mortgage out and redo the foundation, put on a new roof, you're making a sound investment in the quality. Right. So, what I would think is that, from our Saturday experience, we heard folks talk about sidewalks. We heard about other improvements that are there. Those are capital improvements. You use the money that we are, fortunately, getting available to us here, and you invest them back into the infrastructure of your town. I don't conflate the Measure C, Measure J, and, and how we expressed that to the community, which were to, to meet capital projects, but also to meet ongoing obligations with regard to fire and, and police and, and other things that we identified. But it seems to me that this is maybe not once in a lifetime, but once this year, when we can make a, a net a financial benefit.
And you end up with $34,000 left over.
After spending money on capital improvements.
After spending 900,000. I guess.
On capital improvements.
Okay. My argument is this. When I argued for Measure C to increase it, we end up with 225,000 more a year. One of the things I suggested that we could do with that is fix the downtown sidewalks. You know, David, I take the fiscal prudency very, very much to heart. And I'll, I'll listen to the rest of the council, but I completely disagree with you. It's not about just continuing to have money. If we take this, if we just go straight with no new money, we end up saving money that potentially we can put back into infrastructure as well.
I, I don't follow that. Can you describe that to me?
Just look at the chart.
No, I'm not following your argument.
The chart shows that you end up saving in interest 1.446, and if you read the staff report.
No, no, no. If you, what you, I, we're agreeing with each other. You refinance. What I'm saying is you're netting 1.4 out. You take the 1.4 that you've taken, that's your proverbial second mortgage, and you invest it into the town's infrastructure.
Okay. Option two is taking money out.
Yes.
It's, it's separate from option one. Could someone explain this to David?
I'm entirely in a.
You're not on the same page.
Okay, then.
There's two options, which I don't think you understand.
I believe one of you is talking about spending the savings, right? Which is what you're talking about, Barbara. And what you're talking about.
Is spending 1.4.
Which is spending the savings, right? But what is on the table is pulling, I mean, because these savings are not actually sitting there on the table, because this is unbudgeted money going down the road.
That's right.
And so, by refinancing, you're getting that cash in hand.
Yes.
For this money that is budgeted by CalPERS to make their ends meet. We're refinancing their seven and a half percent. They're saying that they're going to make seven and a half percent on their money. We found out how they're planning on making seven and a half percent. They're saying we owe them the 4.1 million.
John, tell me where I'm incorrect on this. Maybe the hour grows too late, and we've been meeting, and I got up early. So, tell me where I'm wrong on this. Mr. Pressman reinvests, he takes his action. We net out 1.4 million. We take the 1.4 million, we put it into account X. We have a discussion with the community about the expenditure of 1.4 million on capital projects.
You haven't looked at option two.
Hold on one second. Let, Garrett wants to.
Maybe a little clarification. The 1.4 is what you achieve over the 20-year period. What you're doing because of the present value of money, that 1.4 over 20 years is worth 900,000 right now. So, you're actually getting 900,000 now to do capital projects, where if you didn't, then according to this, you would get 1.4 over 20 years. But obviously, 500,000 of that's the first five years, and after that, it's like 50 or 60,000 a year. That's what you're getting. So.
That's correct.
It's exactly like you said. In essence, you're refinancing, take money out to do improvements now, rather than waiting to save up to do it over time. But clearly, a policy decision at all levels about what do you think is best for your community at this time. I don't know. That, that helped or make it more confusing. So, it's strictly, it's strictly, again, you refinance your side funds, because that's just like a 20-year mortgage. You're doing it cheaper. Everyone's doing it. CalPERS, whether or not CalPERS at some point comes back and says, hell, we got to change the rules of the game, I don't know. That just makes complete sense, half the interest rate. The question then is, do you want to take money out now to do capital improvements over a period of time, or pay as you go? It's like I, how I like to say of it is, where you take your savings, you save it, you see a project, you save enough, you pay with cash, you're done. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. And it's, you know, maybe it's a lateness of the hour for the policy discussion, but, you know, the longer we take, if interest rates go up, then that 900 is not going to be 900. It's going to be less than 900.
So, if I may, option one, the first year, we saved $99,000. The next year, $103,000. That's like having an extra $100,000 in our general fund budget, correct? So, it's like we've increased our budget those years by, say, $100,000. And then the subsequent years, it drops down to somewhere between 50 to 60,000, $70,000. So, it's like every year, we have an extra, somewhere between 50 to $100,000 available, because we aren't paying this extra interest on the debt. Is that a fair thing to say?
That's, that's a fair thing to say.
Okay. Now, on the $900,000, so let's say we take option two, and your metaphor, I think, is correct of like refinancing your house. So, we have that $900,000. What would it cost if we were to finance $900,000 in capital improvements by, say, a bond measure or something? Because money costs money. And it seems like having that $900,000, spending it now, means that over the course of 20 years, we're going to pay 1.4 million for that $900,000. Or, or 1.4 million minus $35,000. We're going to pay 1 point, yeah, roughly 1.4 million over 20 years to have that $900,000 now. Is that correct? And that's, that's pretty much going to be the status quo of if we do nothing, the equivalent in terms of the amount of cash flow going out. Is that correct? Okay. So, fair to say then that $900,000 over 20 years is going to cost us roughly $500,000 is the cost of getting that money. Now, I may be oversimplifying it, but that's how I see it, because when you refinance, you, you know, you pay, that, that money costs you something. So, is paying $500,000 a good deal to get $900,000 relative to what we would pay in interest on bonds to get $900,000 for our capital improvement bonds?
I think the best way to answer your question is, what you have to keep in mind is, you just can't issue bonds without issuance costs.
I, I know. I'm, I'm trying to get some.
It's the same. So, normally, it's not, the economies of scale aren't there to do a bond issue of like a million dollars, because the costs are so great, and you're still going to have this repayment schedule. So, that's why you wrap it all together. A larger bond issue costs you as much as a smaller bond issue in essence.
Okay. But proportionality, you know, there's roughly a nine, a nine to five ratio of.
Now.
Of, of principal to five of interest for the cost of money. Is that proportional to, say, traditional bond financing for capital improvement?
Yeah. Well, Mark can probably explain it better. But yes. So, think about it this way. This in essence, the mechanism, the mechanism is that we're talking is a certificate of participation. You could argue it's like a, a bond. But everything has an issuance cost. So, if you issue something 5 million, issuance cost is the same as you issue 1 million. But if you issue 1 million, because your issuance cost is so much bigger proportionally, you're paying a lot more for that money. So, it's always cheaper, if you're going to do it, you do the bigger bond issue, because your costs, there's certain costs there are going to be the same, no matter what. You'll have your legal costs, underwriting, you know, some things may vary, but you'll always have a base level of costs for all your issuance. So, the best way to describe it is, if you're going to do it, this is the best way to do it. You don't do it separate. You, you can't have a bond issue. There's no way to have no issuance cost with a policy.
I, I understand. You're not going to do a bond for a million dollars. It's not cost-effective.
Right.
But what are typical bond amounts done for?
An overall bond?
Percentage-wise, you're talking about. What percent would you get?
Is this a good deal, or are we paying, you know, a?
It's three and a half percent, 3.7%.
3.7% per year?
Right.
If I may interject, I think to answer your question, if, if you were to issue a million-dollar bond over 20 years, what would your cost be at the approximate rate that we're talking about here? It would, your interest, your total cost of your, your loan would be, you have to pay back principal and interest over the 20 years. Typically, with a little bit higher interest rate environment, or a 30-year bond issue, your, your, your cost of principal would be approximately double. In other words, if you borrowed a million, it would cost you 2 million to pay it back over 30 years. Here, we're talking about a shorter period, so you're going to have less interest. You're cutting off interest for 10 years, right? So, your, your cost is going to be, I would suspect it's going to be, on a million dollars, might be around 600 to 700,000. Here, you're getting it for 500,000. So, I, I don't think this is, this is not costing you extra more than it would if you went out and just borrowed a million dollars for 20 years at, at today's rates.
Okay.
I don't think the 500,000, I think the 500,000 is attractive comparatively, if you were just doing a million dollars on its own over 20 years at today's rates.
And, and is it proportional to say, if you were doing a 10-million-dollar bond?
I'm not answering that, that size. I'm talking of generalities, whether it's 1 million, 10 million, 20 million. Your cost is going to be about 70% more than the principal.
Okay. So, that's.
Over, over a 20-year period.
That's a rough measure of the cost of the money.
Ballpark, yes.
Okay.
And here, here it's costing you about 50% as opposed to 70%.
Or 60%, I suppose.
Six, yeah. Thereabouts. And I, I'm just ballparking.
Right. So, it's, it's in the range. It may be a little better than.
I think it's competitive, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
John.
A bigger question. I mean, yes, if, if we said, okay, we need the money for X, and we need to get this money by hurrah, by crook, one way or the other, and we say, okay, let's borrow it, that's one thing. But right now, we're looking to balance our budget by passing Measure C. And there's some things that we have earmarked for it. And we are considering financing this CalPERS side fund, which they have created as a mechanism for them to make seven and a half percent. And so, we're refinancing it at 3.7, which I think, on the face of it, makes a lot of sense. And then, because we are doing that, it looks attractive to take that savings and get it now, instead of getting it eked out over the next 20 years. In the bigger picture, I think that what, that this conversation that we're having is going to happen at a lot of towns and cities around California, because they're making their seven and a half percent on all kinds of places that have pension obligations. And at the end of the, well, probably not the day, but at the end of the year, CalPERS is going to say, well, wait, you know, okay, everybody woke up and smelled the coffee. They're not totally dumb. We're going to have to get our seven and a half percent somewhere else. And they're going to rejigger the books. And they're going to say, well, you know, we said you owed 4 point, whatever it is, now you're going to owe, or for them to get their seven and a half percent, now we're going to owe whatever, 5.6 million, or whatever number that they come up with. I, I think that that's what I've seen work so far, since I've been walking, watching CalPERS trying to rejigger their books.
So, what are you suggesting we do?
I am suggesting maybe not pull this money out. Because generally, we've operated as a pay-as-you-go thing. We make a budget. We live within our means. We don't borrow excess to live beyond our means, because, you know, we're a small town. And.
So, you're saving, so you have this interest savings that you can allocate, that we're not paying, but you're not spending a half a million dollars to get 900,000?
Right. You're going to say, okay, I'm going to get that 1.4.
We would still have additional money, because we're saving interest payment.
We're going to save it. And right now, it looks like for the next five years, we're going to save around $100,000 a year. And sure, we can budget that 100,000. It's the conservative way to go.
Okay. So, what you're saying is, have Mr. Pressman do his, work his magic, and then as we accrue savings, call it 100 grand for the next one, two, three, five years, and then half of that for the 15 years after that, more or less, that's money that we can make an allocation upon on a year-by-year basis.
Right. That's a year-by-year. And, you know, the way it looks right now, it looks like it'll be 1.447 million over the next 20 years, not the same amount every year. I suspect that it's not, you know, we'll, we'll get down the road a few years, and it'll be a different formula. And it's not going to be news in our favor. So, if I'm extrapolating your thought, you're saying, ah, on paper, Mr. Pressman has brought us a chart that says you're going to make $100,000 for each of the next five years. However, we know not what CalPERS will, will do, and that money may end up having to be allocated toward their account. Yes. And we've seen what they've done in the past on, in relation to the Fireboard pension, for instance, where they've said, oh, okay, we're getting X amount. Now, we've recalculated what we can make on the stock market and various other places, the various other places, being municipalities such as us, that they're charging us a lot of money.
Let me see if I understand Barbara's point. Am I correct that what Barbara is saying is, no, 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 no. It is true that over the 20 years, you'll accrue 1.4, but don't borrow against that as a, a home equity loan. Rather, think of it as a yearly stipend that you're going to get, that you can make a decision on.
You guys are saying the same thing.
Yeah. We're saying the same thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I think, you know, if CalPERS does claw that back at a later date, the way that John's talking about, and we've, you know, spent the $900,000, then, you know, we're going to have to come up with that clawback money somehow. If we don't take out the $900,000 now, that clawback money will at least be in our budget, you know, down the road, and that will be, you know, be saving the, those interest payments as, you know, as is charted out here. I, from an accounting perspective, I, I tend to want to be a little conservative on this, unless we have a really screaming, dying need right now for those capital funds. It's very attractive to do the refinance. And in some ways, you know, interest rates are really low right now. They're never going to be this low. It's like grab $900,000 at 3% interest. like, grab $900,000 at 3% interest. You know, Janet Yellen, who knows, if Trump gets elected, maybe interest rates will be at 12% this time next year, God forbid.
It would be easy. And we'd get some sidewalks out of the deal.
But, 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 I, but, long story short, I, I would tend to be, want to be more conservative, do the refinancing. It's not every day you find 1.4 million dollars under the seat cushions and you're in your couch, but I would allocate that towards, you know, just saving the money rather than grabbing it for capital improvements now.
If, if, if I may make a couple of clarifications. I'm not questioning your judgment or your drift. Two things, and Michael, if you'd correct me, but my understanding of the CalPERS, the, the, the pre-13 and the, the other side fund, those are quantified obligations, and they don't change. CalPERS is contracted for that. Once you pay it off, they can't come back and say, you owe us more. Once you've paid it off, it's gone. It's a, it's a, it's an obligation that you've repaid, and they can't come back. They can come back on the post-2013. They can come back on that, because that's not been quantified as a payoff, okay? But, the, the other, that's an obligation that they have quantified and indicated, you have this amortization period over, of X payments over so many years, and once you've done that, you're done. So, once you pay that off, that's not going to come back to you, okay? The other thing is, that by doing this CalPERS refinancing, what you are doing is you are, you're not generating money to yourselves, what you are doing is you're lowering your cost, lowering your overhead, okay? You're not generating new money, you're just cutting your overhead, okay? So, the difference between your lowered, reduced overhead, and what you are currently paying now, that is the money, that's the $100,000 for the next five years, and 50, 60,000 thereafter, okay? Just, I just want to be clear that that's what you're doing.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's $100,000 that we're not going to have to take out of somewhere else. But, it has the same effect of, you know, having a, $100,000 more-
I just want to be clear that, that it's not-
Yeah. $100,000 less obligation is the same thing as $100,000 money available to spend on something else.
I understand, but I just, I want to make sure it's not, that you understand it's not revenue, it's just reduced cost.
Yeah, a question for Mike and Garrett, if I may. Is there any desirability or value or reason to, we have this chart of savings to the town. We don't, do we want to, or do we not want to somehow allocate in our future budgets? This is some kind of an item for, I, I don't know.
Maybe the best way to describe it, as Mark did, is, this just means, you'll have $100,000 to allocate differently within the budget. But, the caveat being, as the Vice Mayor pointed out, is, we have this other unfunded liability of purse, and that's the moving target. And so, we do have a payment schedule from them, and what happens is, that never goes down, it always goes up. So, this gives you a little flexibility. If your retirement costs go up, you could put it toward that.
Yeah, I mean, the net effect, you know, refinancing the mortgage is just-
You're saving on your payments.
Honey, our mortgage went down by $500 a year.
Exactly.
Woo-hoo, and then-
Right.
You just have that money available.
Right. So, what will happen in the budget is, if I use the example, would be, rather than budgeting 514 to pay the side fund in pre-2013 UAL, you're going to budget 414. So, it'll be $100,000 there to allocate toward some other expense.
We'll still have that hard cost of the 414. Okay.
To ask one question. I mean, so, obviously, we've gotten the idea that I'm pretty thrifty and ultra-conservative, and I would vote for Option 1. But, just one question on Option 2. It talks about the tax-exempt interest rate, means money has to be spent within three years, which will never happen, so of course, we're going to be at the higher rate. The question I have is, on the chart for Option 2, on the backside, maybe, did you do these charts, Mark? Okay. Is that chart reflecting the higher interest rate, or is it reflecting the lower interest rate with this idea that somehow we would spend money within three years? I can't tell that from the chart.
I can push the button, please, under-
I think she's referring to the chart that says, new money to town with no spend-down restrictions?
Yeah, so basically, the bottom line is, we're not spending, let's say we did this, even though I'm a cheapskate, and I would vote against it. Okay. So, if we did this, we would be at the higher interest rate, and what I don't see here, is, is that what that's reflecting on this chart, the higher interest rate?
That's correct.
Okay. Good. I don't see it, so I, maybe I'm half asleep. Okay, thank you.
So, anything else, or are we ready to make this decision? Public comment.
If, if I may interject, what we're asking for now is guidance, direction from you. What, if you approve to do this, whether it's Option 1 or 2, what we would propose to do, based on direction from you tonight, we would come back to you in November with all the documents, and then you would bless those documents and say, okay, you're authorized to sell the bonds and to go ahead and execute this transaction. So, then, the, in, probably in December, it would be funded and become effective, okay?
Okay, so the decision to be made is, do we refi, and then, which option? So, does anyone want to make a motion?
So, I'm going to make a motion.
Do you think, do you think time is of the essence, and that we have to meet specially here? I, I, you know, all I know is what I read in the business section of The Times. Do you suspect that interest rates may rise by the time that the magic is completed?
So, we could have a special meeting if you think it's before you need to move-
I left my crystal ball at home, sorry. But, I, I, the markets right now, the, the MMD Municipal Money Market Index went up seven basis points on the longer bond today.
What is happening for interest rates?
Well, it's, it's an upward trend, and it went up seven basis points today, was up five yesterday. So, what the markets are indicating is they're anticipating-
So, do you want us to meet specially?
Well, I, I'm not going to advocate whatever you do. I, I think, when the Fed moves the money, moves the rate up, that's short-term rates. What we're also seeing is the, a flattening of the yield curve. In other words, the short rates are coming up more than the longer rates. So, it used to have this kind of relationship. Now, this is staying relatively similar, but the short rates are coming up more. So, you have more of a flatter curve rather than a steep one. So, my, go out on a limb, but my estimation is that the cost of long-term money will not significantly increase. The short-term money, the short end of the curve will go up as a function of the Fed. The only way that the Fed would influence long-term rates would be to buy, get on a program of buying Treasuries and buying, you know, their own debt to reduce the supply. That would, you know, reduce the, the price or the interest rate on longer-term debt. They're not doing that. They're doing interest rate, which is the short-term rates.
So, it sounds like from that explanation, you think our timing of coming back, if we give you direction tonight, that the timing is such that November, you could come back with everything and be done, or would you prefer that we do a special meeting so you could do this more rapidly?
Well, I, I think I'd rather do it more rapidly, but on a practical standpoint, there's no way that we can get all the documents put together in a really short time.
Well, let's say that, so our next meeting is something like November 5th. Would it be better for you if we had a special meeting sometime in October?
As they say, I don't think we can get all the documents together in that time.
Okay.
We, we need a month to get it put together.
All right, so then, it doesn't help. All right, then, I'm going to make a motion. My motion would be that we move forward with financing strategies using Option 1.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, that's motion Kohler, second. Weinshof, and it's unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Pressman.
Thank you. And, you know, one suggestion, if you can get the paperwork together sooner than that, and there's going to be a-
We have one more.
-jump in the interest rates, let, let Garrett know so that we could, I mean, we could convene a, a special meeting fairly quickly if-
Thank, thank you.
-there's a precipitous rise on the horizon.
The, the, things are crazy right now. It's really, really, we closed an issue today. We had, we are swamped, the bond attorneys are swamped. It's just, it, it's, it's crazy. And, and so, everybody's trying to do it now. So, I, I just, I think we just sort of got to work through it, and we'll keep that in mind, but I suspect we're going to be in November. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks very much for staying so long. We have one last item, and that would be, item number 13.
13.
So, Garrett, you want to give us a brief little tidbit here?
Sure. This is actually, we're asking for, actually, approval for power wash or steam clean sidewalks downtown, or place a water fountain in the downtown area, which would actually be right in front of Town Hall. This is something, actually, the mayor suggested in terms of perhaps replacing the waterfront fountain in front of Town Hall with one that's easy accessible, has the pet-drinking fountain, and has a water bottle filler. I think the cost is roughly four, $4,000, $4,500. Could be a little less, depending what we ultimately get. Maybe it costs upwards of $600 to install. We actually only have one estimate for this power wash and steam cleaning. It's way so high, I wouldn't even recommend doing it. It was like for $12,000, some crazy number. And so, what we're doing is, we're trying to rethink that from a staff level. Can we do something that meets our water quality, discharge, preventing it from going into storm drain approach, for something that's much cheaper? Maybe we could do it ourselves, maybe it's a piece of equipment, but I just don't really have a good answer at this time.
What do the, what do the other towns do?
I don't think they do it at all, but I haven't asked them. Maybe some do, or maybe-
Ours are really dirty.
Or maybe they do have a downtown improvement district that does it. Where I was from, the downtown improvement district paid for it.
So, is it true, we can't just power wash because of the creek?
Well, power washing, you have to prevent the water from getting into the storm drain, either keeping it out, or filtering it, or doing something. So, you can't do that. It is conceivable, if you steam, I call it steam cleaning, where in essence, that steam gets it cleaned, but it's so little water, it evaporates before it gets to the creek. And, and so, we're looking at, and we were thinking of the machine. There are machines out there that brush it. It recycles the water, and so, keeps it all in there, and there's really no discharge. But, at this point, I would say for this one, I, I just don't even have a recommendation for you, even if we could do it internally and it was fairly inexpensive. I think we might want to hold off until the next meeting. Should have more information on the cleaning of the sidewalks.
Okay, but you'll keep it, you, you will come back with something for next meeting, right?
Right, because the $12,000 that I just saw today-
No, that's ridiculous.
That was, that was, that was very ridiculous.
No, that would not make all the people happy.
No, I, I didn't even know what that included. It just seemed outrageous.
Now, the water fountain is a whole nother story.
Oh, can I bring up, so I pulled this, and the reason I pulled it is, it's not that it's a bad idea, but I know Garrett has said many times, Cindy Swift has been asking for the water fountain in Doc Edgar Park to be fixed or installed. I kind of have a problem with just picking one if we're going to do this, and I really have a problem with spending even $5,000 on something before Measure C passes. I also think we have the Measure A money, the parks money, which I think this is more suitable for. And, I don't think it's a pressing issue, so my thoughts are, it's not that it's a bad idea. I mean, the power washing really troubles me with these crappy sidewalks that we have to begin with. So, we're going to clean up the dirty sidewalks so people can see where they fall, most likely, but-
Which we wouldn't be responsible for.
Correct. I understand that. But, I just feel very strongly that this is premature. I think we're going to get the idea of people, Cindy Swift has been talking about that Doc Edgar water fountain for quite a while, and we've said no. And we've said no because water fountains are difficult to maintain, kids put dirt in them, whatever.
Which is why the Town Hall site, the reason that I got all excited about this was San Onofre just put one in.
Well, I don't care what San Onofre does.
I, I, I'm just telling you, and not because they did it, but because it was really-
Why can't we wait and see if Measure C passes before we start doing-
That would be fine with me, but let's not take it off the table, because we have no water fountains, and the fact that we have no water bottle filler when we're looking at being a zero-waste town, and it's-
Let's, let's wait, let's wait to see if Measure C passes, potentially bring it back, but I think we also ought to consider the Doc Edgar Park one.
Well, I, I actually, I, I understand, and with all respect to Cindy, this is right in front of Town Hall.
So, it can be monitored.
It can be monitors, it's, sorry, I'm really tired.
So, that when the kids are pushing the dirt in there?
There's no dirt, there's no sand, there's no clogs, there's the police watching.
You'll have, you'll have Chief Moore watching that water fountain like a hawk.
And it's across the street from the 7-Eleven, which means people will refill their water bottles instead of buying plastic water bottles.
Yeah, I think that the downtown-
And it could be a very important asset to the town.
So, I would vote to consider it in December as a separate item from the power washing, unless, of course, somehow we get that figured out.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure why this is one item. That was just to appease me. But, I, just stick it all in one item.
Yeah, let's, let's bring it back to December. I, I do think, if I had to choose one, I, I would probably choose in front of the Town Hall. I think it would be, just because I think it would be used by a lot more people overall than Doc Edgar Park.
And what is wrong with our current water fountain in front of Town Hall?
Well, it clearly doesn't work very well. I don't even know if it means-
Yeah, it doesn't work very well, yeah, I've noticed it.
The bottle filler part would be a different part.
You know, the water bottle filler is now the standard. It's in the schools, it's in every town, and it's really, really embarrassing that we don't have one. But, having said that, I really defer to Barbara's judgment. I'm waiting for the results of Measure C. And with that, David would like to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I would like to adjourn with Patrick Traup. I mean, I know we honored him last, past Patrick Traup's passing. I think it's, he was a good member of our community, and I think it's good to acknowledge that also.
Thank you, John. And, good night, everyone.